All right, you are live on YouTube. You're live on Facebook.
I lost my.
You are live on the channel, so you're live all across the board and it's 20 seconds to seven.
Okay, so I just need to find my, my, I lost my own Zoom screen, so I can't see anybody. Oh, there we go, okay. Okay, so it is seven o'clock. I, this is the Swamp Scott Public School Committee Regular Session Meeting, Wednesday, August 5th at 2020 at 7:00 PM. I would like a call to order.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And so we are.
Sorry, I put the agenda up in the flag, sorry.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. So this is Amy O'Connor speaking, and I will begin the meeting by saying I am, this will be my first time doing this on Zoom, so I hope I have everybody's patience. And especially Joe, thank you very much, as well as my co-host Suzanne Wright. All who can, please say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance. Right, so for everybody who's watching, we are now streaming on Facebook Live, the town website, and I believe YouTube. And we have 190 attendees so far here in our Zoom call. And I just want to begin this by saying that I am thrilled that we have this much participation. I know that everybody is very anxious to hear about what is going on. So let me begin by talking about public comment, we're going to do things a little bit differently tonight. We've been experimenting a little bit. This week, we had so many questions and so many great questions last week. But we really wanted our, our team to be able to respond to the questions and not just have them hanging out there. So this week, we, the superintendent sent around a request for questions and we got more than 45. We had 45 on this, but then people who missed the deadline continued to send in questions. This was really helpful, it was great feedback for the school committee. And all of these were shared with the superintendent and her team ahead of tonight's meeting so that they could prepare answers for all of them, if not individually, then as a group, because many of them were consistent. You know, for example, there were a lot of questions about synchronous learning versus asynchronous learning, a lot of questions about protocols, so rather than going through them individually, I thought we would make any community announcements and then go right into the superintendent's report. And then following that, figure out if it makes sense to, to go into, to questions, to open questions. Does that, does that make sense for everybody? Team?
Good for me.
Okay. So why don't we go to community announcements, Suzanne, anything that you want to share?
No, I'm going to save mine for the school building committee update.
Okay. Ted?
I would just echo what you, you had, you said, I was off today, I went down the beach and had the opportunity to speak to a good number of parents and I have not seen the questions of 40 that were, were sent, but I have the full faith in the team, in the superintendent, and I know that there is crazy anxiety, right? And I agree on the anxiety piece. It's easy to build up that anxiety as a parent, as a member of the community, as a school committee member. We will get there, we have the best interests of all in decisions and superintendent and her team, I know, are working hard, and John and I are on the district team, that's meeting on Mondays at 3:30. We had a great meeting the other day, I had to jet out a little early, but we're getting there, thank you.
John, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Thanks, Amy, yeah, just generally on the questions that came in, really good ones, just to echo what you were saying, very good questions. And, you know, just talking with parents and children, talking to friends of my, my children, and my children as well. You know, I'm, I'm hearing a theme about, you know, wherever we land, that it be clear and consistent. So that's the message I've been hearing, and I think the discussions, you know, that I've been involved with so far have, have been to get to that place, so I, I think, I think the message is getting through, and I, and I think, like Ted said, we'll get to that spot, it's just going to take a little bit of time, thank you.
Karen?
No, I don't have anything, I think we just like to get into it, hear what, hear what's going on.
All right, so my error, I, I forgot one person who's very important here. I want to, as part of public comment, I do want to allow Tom Reed to speak. Mr. Reed is not only one of our teachers, but on the, the, the Executive Board of the Swamp Scott Education Association. So let me just figure out how to do that.
I've already promoted him, so he should be ready to go.
Okay. Tom, let us know, unmute yourself and let us know when you're ready to go.
I, I'm unmuted, can you see me?
Hear you.
I can hear you, can anybody see?
All right, no, Joe is sending me signals about what to do. Okay, thank you. Before I read the Teachers Union Statement, I want to thank Pam and the school committee for the opportunity for us to speak and for the cooperative spirit with which they have welcomed our input ever since the pandemic began. We also want to note that unions from over 40 regional districts have signed a statement very similar to the one I'm about to read. So we feel supported both by our administrators and by our fellow teachers in sharing the following statement. "We want to return to teaching our students in our classrooms more than anything. We know that education is best in person, so we've been looking everywhere for signs of hope that opening this fall in some hybrid mode would be safe for us and for our students. But instead of signs of hope, we see warning signs. Studies, studies begin to show that young people are more likely to carry and spread the virus than initially thought. We learned that survivors of the virus may suffer damage to their lungs, livers, kidneys, and hearts that may haunt them for the rest of their lives. In Israel, case numbers soar when schools are reopened. In Georgia, a camp opens up and 260 children are exposed. Maybe some weren't wearing masks, but in Arizona, three teachers do everything right. Masks, social distancing, ventilation, and they still get the virus. One of them dies, her mask did not protect her. Closer to home, a Harvard epidemiologist declares that the hybrid model is probably among the worst options for reopening schools. The website COVID-19 Act Now warns that in Essex County, new cases are rapidly increasing. Why are there twice as many new cases per day in our county than a month ago? We suspect our state's partial reopening on July 6th. As a rule, whenever reopening takes place, the number of cases rises. The more people involved, the greater the increase in cases. Are we ready for that to happen in Swamp Scott as a result of reopening our schools? Our answer is no. So we respectfully ask the school committee to make the tough decision as soon as possible to open our schools fully remotely. Give families the time they will need to make difficult adjustments and give teachers the time to make sure that remote learning will be more effective this fall than it was in the spring, while we all keep looking for more definite answers. Answers we can trust with our lives and our students' lives and the lives of their loved ones at home. When we find these answers, we will be overjoyed to return to the classroom, but not until then. Not until it's safe for us all. Two years ago, the death of a beloved music teacher because of the flu sent the district into a tailspin of grief. The Swamp Scott teachers cannot support any mode of reopening that threatens us all with more such heartbreak. We cannot have any deaths in our hands and in our hearts caused by trying to find a nice, safe middle ground when the evidence piles up that there is, as of now, no such thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, I really appreciate hearing from you and I am thrilled to see so many teachers with us here on tonight's call. So with that, I think it makes sense to go right into what we're all waiting for, Superintendent. For, why don't you take it away?
So I would like to share my screen if possible.
Do I need to do anything?
Suzanne needs to stop.
All you have to do is do share screen Pam, because we're both, we're both hosts, so you can just share yours.
I don't see it, I see you are viewing Suzanne Wright's screen. So if you stop sharing, I think I'll be able to share. I'm not that advanced.
I stopped.
Sorry, not that advanced. Okay, so I'm going to move this over here. So on the agenda, there is a reopening plan, a superintendent's report, and a calendar. Those three separate agenda items, they actually all fall under my superintendent's report. What is still separate on the agenda is the district handbook that needs to be reviewed and approved by the school committee with the changes. So I'm going to start with just some regular updates. First of all, despite everything that's going on, it's important to note that the regular business of the district continues so that the district strategy, which was due to the school committee last spring and got derailed, and the action plan for the district strategy are currently in development. In addition to that, the building level administrators have been working on their school improvement plans and action plans and needs assessments for those as well. So despite trying to come up with a reopening plan that's going to work, our regular business continues. And so the school improvement plans are scheduled to be presented at the September 9th school committee meeting. And I just wanted to note that to the committee so that you're aware that not everything has been pushed aside or put on hold. So reopening in the fall of 2020, there was an article that I linked here and under the direction of our technology director, the links are no longer in blue because they're not accessible, so they're in black, which is hard for me to get used to. But I shared with the committee an article from Commonwealth Magazine from yesterday, and just the headline of it, Ed Commissioner Jeff Riley Pushes In-Person Learning, Ultimate Decision Will Be Up To Local School Committees. I leave that as an article for you to read at your leisure, but we had a call with the commissioner on Monday, and my sense was exactly the same. His communications to us were that 90% of school districts, based on the preliminary submissions, were either hybrid or full in-person, not remote, that should be out of there. Full in-person models. He also wanted us to share with school committees that there is a distinct possibility of additional federal monies coming our way, but there will be strings attached to hybrid and in-person learning so that districts that decide to go fully remote will not likely be eligible for these funds. If districts choose full remote, then athletics are seriously in jeopardy. And that if districts choose full remote, the DESI board will be going out to districts and auditing and holding districts very much accountable. So that article just coincided and followed up with the call and his message to all superintendents on Monday. Our comprehensive plan submission I originally had shared with you is due on August 10th, but many, many districts reached out to the commissioner and shared with him that they had additional school committee meetings scheduled for the 10th, the 11th, or the 12th, like we did. So we originally had a meeting on the 12th, and we scheduled this one as well. So for that reason, the commissioner was open to districts requesting an extension for the final submission to be on August 14th. I submitted such a request and our extension was approved by the commissioner. So that gives us one more school committee meeting to continue our work and to have the final vote in the submission on the 14th. Some news that came out not too long ago that was shared in many, many districts is that we have time on learning requirements from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and typically a school year is 180 days. The commissioner came to an agreement with the MTA, the Massachusetts Teachers Association, for the 2020 school year to allow it, reduce it to 170 days. Our structured time on learning requirements are typically 900 hours for elementary and middle school students. Our middle school qualifies as an elementary school because we have fifth grade there, and the commissioner is reducing that to 850 hours for the 2020, 2021 school year. High school students typically have structured time on learning requirements that are 990 hours. Again, that's being reduced for this upcoming school year to 935 hours for high school students. And the additional days are to provide sufficient training and preparation time for educators and staff prior to the start of the school year, with the caveat that you must begin instruction to students no later than September 16th, 2020, or apply for a waiver. One of the things that both Ms. Seibert, our school business administrator, and myself heard on the calls this week that we participated in is that those 10 days have to be used at the beginning of the school year. You cannot bank some, which we were hoping to do, to fill in some professional development or to do some check-ins with how our plans are going, so we would not be allowed to do that. So I took the calendar link on the agenda, and if you come to the calendar link on your agenda, these would be the changes that we're recommending. So we are recommending that Wednesday, September 16th, all pre-K and grade 1 through 12 students, it would be their first day.
Pam, can I interrupt and just have you scroll down so we can follow along on your?
You can't, this is right in the middle of my screen, you can't see it?
No, we can only see up to the comprehensive plan submission.
Okay, I've now changed my screen to the memorandum, can you see that?
It's possible you paused your screen share.
I really, oh, okay, well, let's go back. Learning, learning. Let me see. I don't think I hit anything, but I will check.
I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, interrupt me, because clearly, I don't know why it's paused.
Try stop sharing and then sharing again, that might refresh it.
Okay. Your screen is paused, yep, I don't know why, so let me share it again. Tell me if it happens again, please. So I clicked on the memo, can you see that now? That was embedded in the superintendent's report?
Yes.
And so what we're looking to make change, the current approved calendar, you all have this in your agenda. If you were to click on it, this, can you see that? Yes. This is the approved calendar for 2021. So if you want to compare the changes, if I, the first day for pre-K and grade 1 through 12 students was going to be September 1st. We are now proposing that that first day would be September 16th, which falls in line with the fact that the commissioner said you cannot start instruction of students any later than September 16th without asking for a waiver. So we are looking to utilize those days up until then for training, for safety training, for mandatory trainings, for professional development, for preparation of their spaces with the teachers. So the 10 extra days that the commissioner was giving us, we're using a portion of those and are recommending that the first day for student instruction be on September 16th. Let's see if I can go back. Kindergarten screening was originally September 1st through September 3rd. With the changes, we are recommending the kindergarten screening take place from September 16th through Friday, September 18th. And the calendar that you voted, the first day for kindergarten students was scheduled to be September 8th. We are asking that be changed to Monday, September 21st. Everything is in line with the changes of the first date for student instruction moving to the 16th.
So that means families with incoming kindergartners who are waiting for school assignments will, they will not get those until after the screening?
Correct.
Okay.
No, they, they would get their school assignments prior, they won't get their classroom assignments.
I'm sorry, classroom.
Thank you.
The other thing that we wanted to do was add Juneteenth and Independence Day observed on Sunday, June 20th. And then there could be some potential upcoming changes with parent conference dates and professional development. And one of the topics that you, Ms. O'Connor and Mrs. Karen were going back and forth about were the Indigenous Peoples' Day, Columbus Day on October 12th. And there had been a conversation a few years ago about changing it, and I thought we, we fell in the area of including both on the calendar, and that was what Mrs. Karen wanted clarity on tonight.
All right, so let me just jump in here real quick. I know that, I don't believe it was last year, I think it was the year before when the school calendar was released, it was released with Indigenous Peoples' Day. And the reason why the school committee made that decision at the time was because that was in keeping with our curriculum. Then I believe that the last calendar that we approved had Columbus Day on it, and it did not say Indigenous Peoples' Day, so I don't, so Mrs. Karen has gone back and looked to see what, if any, decisions were made around it. Wondering if this was just a typo. But I felt strongly that, that I didn't want to just let it slide. And it seems very trivial in terms of all the other things that are happening right now, but since we are talking about the calendar, it seems that, that in keeping with our, our curriculum, that it should be Indigenous Peoples' Day. But I am, you know, obviously, I think for a lot of people and a lot of parents who are looking at the calendar, you know, they, as they're trying to figure out vacations specifically and are looking for those things, might not necessarily be triggered to, to what that is, whereas if it says Columbus Day, that, that would obviously be sort of more in keeping with what, what has been traditional. So I don't know if people, other people on the school committee want to chime in here, have thoughts about this. You know, if it's something as simple as saying, you know, either, you know, Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day observed, or, or the reverse.
Amy?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Ted, go ahead.
I just, I remember the context of what you just referred to in regards to how it, how it played out. Personally, myself, if Maureen's looking at it, then we know it's there, but in the essence of looking at what's going forward in the topics tonight, I, I would say, let Maureen look at it. We know that there's going to be no school there on Columbus Day, Indigenous Day, but for tonight, I, I, if someone's looking at it, they can get back to us, and I'd rather look at some of the other things that go on personally.
Okay.
Amy, I was going to sort of say, I, I remember, I remember it appeared on the calendar and everyone was sort of blindsided by it, and that's why we sort of tabled it and said, we'll, we'll get back to it. And then we sort of never circled back to, should we rename this holiday or not? And I think that, I think that I agree with Ted, like, let's not waste time on it right now, and let's just call it both for, for tonight, because I think, I think it does warrant maybe a little bit more robust of a discussion because people do have some strong feelings about this, and I mean, you know, and, and just, why? Why now? So, but I had a question about the 19th, the Juneteenth. Why are we observing it on Sunday? Why don't we just observe it on the 19th one? It is, I mean, it's a Saturday, so what does it matter if we observe it on a Saturday or Sunday? It's kind of weird that it's written that way.
Suzanne, let's just hold off on that, I just want to hear from Karen and John before so that we can just make a quick decision on this.
Okay.
I'm fine with it saying both. I think it gets the message across, but also the date is recognizable for people to plan, so I think we can leave, I think we can leave it as both right now.
All right, John?
I agree, Amy, let's focus on the other things today.
Okay, done. So let's go back, Suzanne, to your question about Juneteenth.
Yeah, I was just noticing, I mean, it's, Juneteenth is, is a Saturday, I mean, I don't know why it says observe Sunday, the 20th, like, or, or, I mean, it should say observe Friday, like a day off of school, or Monday, like a day off of school, it's just kind of, I just, I was just wondering why, I mean, it doesn't really matter.
I, well, I'm sure Donna's taking that in the notes, and I can circle back with Mrs. Karen tomorrow.
Okay.
So more importantly, it's the revisions here that need to be made. And I don't know how you want to handle that, Amy, if you want to vote on it.
Now, you know, in the past that we do require a vote for, for the official school calendar. So I think, especially as it relates to the beginning of, of the kids, the, the student calendar, I, I would like to vote on that. So so do I have, I will entertain a motion to approve the calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar to reflect those changing start dates for the whole school and then kindergarten screening.
Do I have a second?
A second.
So do we need any further discussion?
No.
Okay, then we'll take a roll call vote, I'll call your names, all in, all in favor, Karen?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John? You're muted?
Yes, yes.
And Suzanne?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the unanimous approval of the calendar as you presented it, Superintendent, thank you.
Thank you. Can you see the middle of my screen now where it says substitute data for the fall? Okay, so a lot of conversations have occurred about what are we doing for substitutes? And our substitute coordinator, Jamie McCaskey, collected some interesting data in terms of this, whatever format we're in, and I just wanted to share it with the committee. So we have 33 substitutes listed here. There is no revealing information, so I felt comfortable sharing it. You can see how many substitutes said that they would substitute if it were in-person, and who said it was no in-person, and two said it was undecided. How many substitutes currently said they would do Zoom substituting, no to Zoom, and undecided. And my final point on this information is that she also noted she had seven people that she had interviewed to be added to our pool, so that's up to 40, which I think is pretty impressive to be doing in the middle of the summer, and I just want to shout out to Jamie for the job that she's done and the fact that she's reached out and collected this data for us, and we'll keep it coming our way.
And are the, are the substitutes, particularly the ones who are consistently in our district, have they been trained on? Or will they be part of the Zoom, the continued training?
Those that haven't will be, but this is our existing pool, so many of them participated in the trainings in the spring. And so those that need, there's going to be more trainings offered for staff and families and parents. And so there are some, there are also are some And so there are some, there are also are some trainings going on during the summer. So I would hope that people are taking advantage of that as well. We could add to that spreadsheet and talk about what, what software or websites they've been trained in. And I'll revisit that. One of the other things I wanted to update the committee on is that we got a directive from our human resources director, Julie Delillo over at Town Hall. And we have been using self-certification forms when we came back to the office as administrators, but now there is an employer log and also a guest log. And when you walk in any building, you'll be greeted with binders that you have to fill out. And already today, the middle school has a full sheet of your time in, your time out, contact information, and that they'd filled out a self-certification. And I will go back and click on the guest log as well, so that we can really keep track of our data in terms of any contact tracing if it were necessary. And then the self-certification, you've already seen, but I'll bring it up again. There is a self-certification form where it lists that, you know, I haven't been asked to self-isolate a quarantine by the doctor and local health officials for the last 14 days. And so they need to fill those out as well. So we really have binders going, they're set up at every school. And that, we were doing a portion of this, but now, as the summer's gone on and we are having more visitors, we're, we're doing this as well.
And will this, I don't want to jump the gun, but will this feed into or be the same as when students are back in school?
Yes. I do not see this going away for the foreseeable future.
But that's just for employees?
No, it's for guests as well. There's a guest log as well.
Okay.
Ted has his hand up?
Ted, you want to?
Just, just, I have a couple of questions. Just Jamie, what was Jamie's last name?
McCaskey.
So on, on the subs, I know that there was a bunch of fees that were waived by the state for the fingerprinting? No, I've struck that. For maybe certifications? Do I have that right? Do they still have to get fingerprinted?
Yes.
For the subs, they do?
The, the state has waived, they have waived certifications and licenses, so that if you have an extreme hardship, you can, you can hire somebody in a teaching position, that's a certification or a license. Corey's, Saffis, fingerprinting, none of that has been waived, that all has to occur. And all of the hires and interviews I've done via Zoom, they've all gone through the same rigorous paperwork that has happened, if it would happen in person. The only difference is their interviews with me, their interviews with the teams have happened via Zoom.
All right, and just last, and, and I, I would, I would love to see some of those subs. I had talked to Mike Sweeney, the veteran agent last year, right? And I think it would be great if the district had some veterans as subs. And I could have that conversation with him again, encourage it, but I, I think it's, it's not only good for the veterans, but I think it's great for the kids to not only learn, learn the studies that the classroom is providing for that day, but also maybe to learn a little bit about a, a veteran in, in the country as well.
All they have to do is apply. There, you can contact Maureen if you want to point them in the right direction. They do have to go through the application and interview process, but that would be great to have them on board.
Thank you.
I know one of the long-term subs at the middle school, Mick, Mick, Mick is a veteran, and he's, he's been there a while. Pam, is there, Pam, is there talk about, can we get this digitized rather than, than paperwork?
What digitized?
The, the employee and the guest logs and the certifications.
Right now, we're focusing on back-to-school paperwork for families making it digitized, so that's a priority right now. Right now, we're doing the old-fashioned binders for this. This is low on our priority list, and I think we'll get there, just not right now.
Right.
It's more important in my presentation to show you what we are trying to get electronically done to make it easy for families. I think they take precedent over these. This is something we can manage by paper until we have some breathing room to be able to figure it out. I mean, we're constantly doing that. For example, today, Mrs. Karen is no longer sending back our absence request forms in paper, we now get them electronically. So every day, we're improving our electronic uses, but right now, this just got rolled out, we're hard copy, and we'll get there.
Okay, thank you.
The final point under building protocols is the town hall drafted a town hall safety plan. And my facilities department, with our director of facilities, Max Casper, and Julie Delillo, human resources director, and Garrett Baker, our operations manager, are working on our school department safety plan. And so that is happening along with posters that would be posted, but the safety plan is talking about if somebody contracts, what will happen? So that, along with the guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, will be used to drive the protocols that are put in place for health and safety. I just got a text from our human resources director, Julie Delillo, and she said, we are digitizing the self-verification, and we can use that. So we're, see, we're always thinking about that, but right now, she sent a directive, we got the papers out, we got the binders out. We do follow directions.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Julie.
Okay, um, let's get on to the heart of the work tonight. I, I just want to say about the reopening plan that I've received some really nice emails from families saying, not only sharing their opinions and their comments and suggestions because they missed the deadline for filling out the Google Sheet online, but also recognizing how complicated and layered this opening and reopening is, and how many moving pieces there are. And I appreciate that acknowledgement, because I've received some emails where I get the sense that because we're not telling everybody every step of the way, people are concerned that things aren't happening. I've also said a couple of weeks ago at the meeting that no two districts are alike. And so for people to assume that because another district is doing something one way, that we're going to do it the same way is not realistic. And as I said two weeks ago, we all have different facilities. And we know what our facility needs are and our facility challenges are, particularly at the elementary level, because we're, all of our statement of interest for all three elementary schools have been submitted to the MSBA. I also want to make it known that Commissioner Riley was very, very clear on several conference calls to over 500 superintendents and assistant superintendents, that he requested us not to release any plans until on or before, on or after, not to release our plans on or before August 10th. August 10th was when he wanted them released. I'm well aware and I've seen that Lexington's came out, and Chelsea's came out, and Framingham, and Concord-Carlisle, and I'm sure there's many more that I haven't seen. But we were following the directive. The directive was not to release a formal plan until the 10th. There have been lots of meetings, there's been lots of feedback from parents, lots of emails and families, and I appreciate it all, because that's the way we're, not only the committee, but my team is taking the feedback and trying to think about all of the things that make this so complicated. I also recognize that no plan that we come up with is going to be perfect for everyone. But as I've said to union leadership and I've said to our employees, you know, my focus really has to be on what I think is best for our students. That has to be the only focus, the laser focus I have. And that's through data, what's equitable, what's socially, emotionally correct. And that, as I also said a couple of weeks ago, our number-one district priority has always been the mental health and social emotional wellbeing of our kids, that hasn't wavered. And so when I think about that, I will be honest and say to the committee that this has not been a linear path to where, what I'm going to present to you tonight. I have been on the windiest road with my team and my leadership, trying to figure out what's best. I really feel like I'm on some winding road in California and trying to straighten out. So with that, I'm going to go into my presentation for tonight. I'm just going to move. So here's a, the reopening plan for 2020. We are in the midst of compiling the text that will be submitted, that will be the final submission, but this is the gist of it. As I mentioned before, we had, two weeks ago, we had the reopening district task force. We have the reopening district working group, which is also the Phase Four planning group. And then we have school-based reopening teams. All of these teams have been filled with members. The reopening task force, as Ted said, had a really great meeting on Monday. I challenged my own skills and learned how to use breakout rooms in Zoom. And we broke off into groups and some real good work was done. The reopening district working group has been meeting weekly for two hours for quite some time. And the groups that may not have met yet, or I suggested a kickoff meeting, but once the plan has been stamped by school committee, that's when this group is really going to put boots on the ground and be part of implementing this and thinking of poking holes in our plan and, and helping us make sure there's nothing that we miss in our plan. So I want to thank all of the volunteers that are part of these committees. They're huge. I think we have about 23, 24 on the district task force. But being able to break up and work in smaller groups was really effective. And in fact, those smaller groups are continuing work until Friday to finish the work that they started on Monday. So I'm very, very grateful for their assistance. Couple of updates and things that relate to whatever plan we choose is that we've been so busy using the CARES funds, using the ESSR, using whatever's available to us through the hard work of Ms. Seibert, our school business administrator, that it was important for us to put out there what is happening in technology. So every student in grades three to 12 is going to be issued a Swanscott Public Schools Chromebook and will use Google Classroom. One of the things and lessons learned is that the district is working to standardize a template so that every Google Classroom looks the same, and it makes it easier to manage for students and family. That's some of the feedback we got, we heard it, and we're working on it. Every student in pre-K, K through two is going to be issued a Swanscott Public Schools iPad. And their platform will be used as CSO. The pickup details and electronic paperwork are going to be coming soon. We're offering parent technology training. It's going to be offered at the end of August and the beginning of September to coincide with your device pickup. It's going to be one evening a week, in person or virtual, and it will be posted on the website. We understand, again, the feedback we heard is that the parents need technology training. And so we are doing that because we recognize the need for it, we recognize the support we need to give families. All families, including K-4, will use Aspen Family Portal for a paperless back-to-school process. My team's been working incredibly hard to make this happen. Lots of trainings have been attended. Students and families in grades five through 12 already use the Aspen Portal for report cards, so that's a little bit easier for them. But rolling it out to the younger grades is really important to us. And this pandemic has kind of forced us to bring that to the, as one of our top priorities. Again, there'll be more information coming on that. The final piece here is really important. All one-to-one devices are going to have a web filter. Latony Mackinell's, our director of technology and innovation, has been working hard and vetting vendors, so that students will only be able to access appropriate, appropriate materials on school-issued devices when they are not on campus. So if they're at home, this web filter is still going to allow safe use of technology in your homes when students are not within the school buildings. What came, one of the things that came out of our district task force meeting on Monday is the need for COVID testing for all faculty and staff. So we are committed to organizing and rolling out, and we're currently aiming for August 31st, or one of the teacher-only dates, to COVID test every faculty and staff member before they return. Someone made the comment to me that there are people that still haven't been tested, and I will say publicly, I haven't been tested because I haven't had any symptoms. I have really pretty much been homebound, so I haven't been, I've been very fortunate not to be in contact. But I think it's really important to get a baseline. We're starting with one mass testing, and I'm not opposed to doing a second one at some point, but this is a big change from even just a couple of weeks ago. One of our challenges that I mentioned a couple of weeks ago as well is, for consideration for the school committee, is the age of our existing buildings. And we do recognize that we have significant challenges in this area. Our youngest building at 13 years old is our high school. But we also recognize that we need assistance when it comes to any kind of assessment. We have a facilities department of Max Casper, who is director of facilities, shared on both the general government side and the school department side. We have Garrett Baker, who works tirelessly to lead the team of custodians here in the district. But beyond that, we don't have a large department, nor do we have the skill set to do a thorough assessment. So we're utilizing one of the DESI documents that came out, and they developed a list of pre-qualified vendors who can provide assessments of school-building facilities. The firms can provide a wide range of technical assistance and training and maximizing the safety in schools' facilities for in-person training. So we've contacted the Valley Breßinger Architects, LBA, to work with our team of Max, Garrett, and Martha Seibert on the assessment of our building's HVAC systems, including ventilation issues that impact internal air quality. The assessment is scheduled to begin on Monday. We expect a preliminary report with recommendations the week of August 19th. And it's really important that they help us assess inventory and provide diagrams of usable spaces to answer the question, where can students safely meet for in-person learning? We've talked a lot about, at our leadership team meetings, at our task force meetings, about the rooms within the district that don't have windows. The rooms within the district that have windows, but they don't work. That's what this assessment is going to help us articulate. And it's going to help us figure out what are other spaces within the building that we potentially could utilize? For example, here at the middle school, could it be the little theater? Could it be the cafeteria? There's lots of windows there. I don't feel qualified with my team to provide that assessment. And so we're really excited that we're hiring a company to come in and tell us what's best for us. We also talked about outdoor space and tents. And I believe as of yesterday, there was an email going around that we were ordering this, or they have been ordered, the six tents. One for each school, but two here at the middle school, because one would be dedicated to the integrated preschool. Martha Seibert, you can chime in if I'm wrong, but I think they're 20 by 40. They do have the rolling sides, even though we've been told that, you know, we would keep those rolling sides up for the foreseeable future. But we are having them delivered and installed, we anticipate right now, the week of September 7th, which is a pretty great turnaround, so that we can start planning for that outdoor space. We are not going to, we came to the decision this week, we are not going to be setting them up as classroom spaces. We were talking about washable mats or plastic mats that would be dedicated to each of the students. Everybody would have their own box of materials, and in that box of materials, especially for the little ones, might be applied their own plastic mats. In addition to that, for the older kids, we were thinking of beach towels, which would help socially distance at the six feet apart. So that outdoor space is in motion, and we are purchasing those. In terms of transportation, this is another whole topic in and of itself. And our cohort of students that we need to consider are general education students, our Naham students, our Boston students, and our special education students. And our assistant superintendent of student services, Martha Raymond, and our school business administrator, Martha Seibert, are reviewing and working closely with DESI and their guidance to figure out what's best for our students. And there'll be more information coming on that. So the preliminary submission that went to the Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education on Friday, the in-person learning model, I pulled a couple of sentences that I submitted. And so the first sentence was, we conducted our feasibility study for full in-person learning, and the data shows with older buildings and smaller classrooms, we're limited in the capacity for this model. And for those of you that were not at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, I've included here the feasibility study where we mapped out every classroom, and we put the averages at the top of these spreadsheets, and how many students you could fit in the classroom at six feet, four and a half feet, three feet. And we, the school submit, school committee voted in full support of maintaining the CDC guidelines of six feet. And my other sentence in another section of that report was, this model's not possible for the Swanscott Public Schools, for the reasons above and for the data in our feasibility study. So that's one plan. and for the data in our feasibility study." So that's one plan. The hybrid model. If we would do the hybrid model, this was my submission, and this is my recommendation. We would go Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. We would have Group A, or half the class, from eight to 11:00. We would do Group B with half the class from 12:00 to 3:00. Now, I recognize teachers' days don't go till 3:00 o'clock, so I will get to that. Classes are 20 to 25 minutes with staggered times for fewer kids in the hallways. All kids would receive in-person instruction for four days per week because Wednesdays would be an at-home day where teachers would be at home, and there would be office hours from 8:00 to 11:00. But I will get to that in a minute. From 11:00 to noon, there would be deep cleaning before that second group came in. And when I say "deep cleaning," it's the sanitizer we have, it's the foggers we have. All of the areas would be done and sprayed so that by the time the next group came in, everything had been sanitized. We would expect masks on all day, but schedule mask breaks throughout the day. And then we were talking about grab-and-go lunches in our district task force so that the group that might be leaving at 11:00 would have a grab-and-go. And perhaps we could figure out a way for those other students that were coming in as Group B to also grab-and-go lunches. Let me go on to the next slide and see. So here's, here we go. I'm going to go back for a minute. A sample schedule might be this: 8:00 to 8:30, period 1; 8:30 to 9:00, period 2; 9:00 to 9:30, period 3; 9:30 to 10:00, period 4; 10:00 to 10:30, period 5; and 10:30 to 11:00, period 6. So for four days a week, your children, our students, would get to connect with their teachers. Wednesdays in this hybrid model, teachers would hold office hours from home from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. This would allow for a deeper cleaning of common areas. If we're utilizing cafeterias, yes, they'd be sprayed down and fogged and sanitized, but a much deeper cleaning, and the bathrooms as well. And our plan for students on Wednesday would be that we'd encourage them to attend office hours. We would assign them 30 to 45 minutes of reading, 30 to 45 minutes of online practice with one example being Study Island. It could be Lexia, it could be a math subscription we have. And then one or two assignments that would be immediately followed up on when students returned on Thursday and Friday. We understand that we're going to need to utilize all common spaces in the buildings because if we look at class sizes and we look at the feasibility study data, we're going to have to be creative and maybe use additional spaces and larger spaces. But what I'm really looking for tonight is the school committee's vote of this plan so that we can start the work that needs to happen in order to make this a reality. So the other plan is the remote learning model. We know that we were in crisis learning and crisis teaching in the spring. We, Dr. Bacon and her working group and Phase Four Committee has done a lot of work and continues to do a lot of work. But this is, these are the highlights. You know, the curriculum is what we teach. And so what we would expect is that students would receive instruction in the same areas that they'd be receiving under typical circumstances. But at the elementary level, we all know that literacy and numeracy skills are the most important. And so that would be where an emphasis would be. At the secondary level in grades five through 12, students would be enrolled in the same number of courses and classes and same rotations as they would in a typical year. One of the things that we are also talking about doing is a back-to-school advisory curriculum for each grade level that would provide explicit instruction needed to support in-school safety, successful at-home learning, and social-emotional skills. The curriculum is going to be delivered by all advisors and homeroom teachers, and the curriculum would be shared with families who can reinforce it at home. How we teach is the pedagogy or instruction. Before the pandemic hit, we were part of the Essex Community Learning Grant. And one of our priorities in that grant was the Universal Design for Learning, our UDL framework. And what it emphasizes is what students should be able to do by the end of a lesson. But there are many ways to get to that content and practice new skills and demonstrate their knowledge of that learning. We have rolled out some UDL professional development with our teams and our staff, but we're going to be continuing that work throughout the year. When students are learning from home, they'll be required to attend synchronous live Zoom sessions with each of their teachers each week, based on a schedule set at the beginning of the school year to eliminate timing conflicts. Educators in grade five through twelve will design and administer assessments specific to their courses to determine if there are skill gaps that will impede students' ability to succeed in mastering the new grade-level curriculum. And then social-emotional learning. It's really important that we establish and re-establish connections and relationships among students, among faculty and administration. And that would be a major focus for the first week of school. Each building would develop a Get to Know Your Educator slide deck or video so that students and families could learn about their multiple teachers. There's going to be a daily homeroom advisory meeting during which the new advisory curriculum would be followed, as mentioned above, which has a heavy emphasis on social-emotional learning and well-being. Target will be to break students into groups of six or fewer so you're really getting that targeted and very intimate connection with those students. Administrators will hold, administrators will hold weekly office hours for families to disseminate information, facilitate the sharing of resources with and among families and solicit feedback. Depending on the topic, the meetings could take place at the building or district level. And then faculty would participate in professional development on trauma-sensitive practice throughout the school year. Again, I think this is what everyone's waiting for. So what would a sample remote learning schedule look like? Faculty and staff would teach or work remotely from their classrooms, except on Wednesdays. That would be their day to work from home, and it would be a half-day, whether we're in hybrid or remote learning. And the reason for that is to allow consistency and ease of transition to the hybrid model. And it would be a half-day remote too, and also for family planning. So Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, full day, and Wednesdays would be half-day. Each period in remote learning would consist of approximately 20-minute Zoom, followed by a time for kids to do the work and check in with teachers before the next class. We all know that before this pandemic hit, there was a lot of talk and concern globally about screen time in children. And so we're trying to be sensitive with that, to that, with our children and with our students by saying, by limiting it. The other piece to the remote learning that I'm not sure I put in here, there are so many things I didn't want to forget, is that we are talking about hard packets for our youngest students. We recognize the challenges that young families face with their littlest ones and the fact that sometimes a paper and pencil or a pencil packet might be easier for families to navigate. And so we are looking at that as part of a remote learning plan as well. So again, here's a sample remote learning schedule. About 15 minutes of homeroom and check-in for the day. And then some more, a small time for group check-in of five or six kids. First period at 8:30, period two at 9:30, period three at 10:30, period four at 11:30. 12 to 1, 1 would be a lunch break. 1 o'clock would be the fifth period, and 2 o'clock would be the sixth period. So the top of this slide reiterates what I talked about when we were talking about calendar early on. Those are just the dates that have been changed that the school committee voted on. What I am proposing and recommending, that's a school committee vote on, that we have spent hours as a leadership team thinking about, and as I said, it hasn't been a linear path to this decision, is that we begin the year remote from Wednesday, September 16th, till Monday, I'm sorry, till Friday, October 23rd. That's about four and a half, five weeks. And the reason for that, I'll get to in the next slide. But my proposal and my recommendation is that, beginning on Monday, October 26th, provided that the data on the virus and the guidelines from the state remain the same, we would move into the hybrid model. And both of those models were just described to above. My rationale. I deliberately separated Friday, March 13th out because there's so much I wanted to say. First of all, I will never forget that day because it was my birthday. And secondly, all of this happened on that day where we decided to close for two weeks, and by Sunday, the governor closed us for three weeks. And what this made me recognize, and I was thinking a lot about this today. I've come into the office probably since beginning or mid-May, I can't really remember, as have my Assistant Superintendent, my Director of Teaching and Learning, my Director of Technology, and my School Business Administrator. And our administrative assistants have been in here alongside us. What I have to recognize is that we've had all of this time to assimilate to the new normal. It has become common practice to have our masks on our desks. And when we encounter somebody in the building to put on our masks, when we're not six feet away, to walk in the building with your mask on, regardless of whether or not you're going to see one. What I have to recognize is that my educators, my faculty, my staff have not been in this building since March 13th, and they have not had an opportunity to practice the new normal, to get into the new habits, the way that we have. And so I separate that bullet point because it dawned on me that it would be remiss of me to not recognize that it takes time for people to practice new protocols within a building. My other rationale is, what's going to happen with COVID-19? What's going to happen in the fall? When is the common flu going to hit? We don't know. So to start remotely for a short period of time would give us time to assess what is happening across the state and what is happening locally in this community now that the schools are going back, are going to be back in session. It gives us time to really set up those outdoor learning spaces and think about how best to utilize them and who is best to do that, but the educators. It gives us time to do a thorough building assessment and mitigate any of the recommendations that might come out of that report. It gives us time to do the COVID testing, and it gives us lots and lots of time to figure out the logistics of all of this. And as I said, it is my hope that the school committee will vote to move forward with this plan so that we can spend the next several weeks really planning out what needs to be done to make this the safest learning environment for our students, our faculty, and our staff. I will take committee comments and questions.
Well, Pam, I just have to begin by saying kudos to you and your team for an extraordinary amount of work, analysis, information gathering. I just, this, I'm proud of the work that you and your team have done, so thank you.
I'm proud of my team, and I really, a huge shout-out to my entire team, building leaders, central office team, everybody on those committees and working groups, I really appreciate it.
I want to just begin by saying, a number of questions have come in that are pretty specific. So to the people who are typing those, we will get to them. But I do want to begin with committee comments. Anybody want to jump in?
I'll start. Pam, I give you, I give you a lot of credit for presenting this tonight. I, I understand that this is all new to us. However, I really don't agree with the manner on how it's been distributed from the commissioner of it, right? So that's who, on your end, that you have to deal with, and I want to tread lightly on that.
Can I interrupt for a moment? Ted, I didn't understand what you just said. You disagreed with the manner of what?
Just the way that information and August 10th and... I, I think it could have been done better, and that, down the road, I think we should look at. I have expressed myself to Representative Earllick in regards to some of the things because I do think it's unfair to the superintendent, the leadership team, but more importantly, the community who elect us and to proceed with, you know, whatever plan is going to be out there. I think that the dates of, you know, the August 10th date, whatever. You know, I think as a committee should circle back on that later. I think it's, I tip my hat to Pam by getting this out to the community today. But I do, I've got about 12 questions here, and I don't want to fire them all off at once. Some of them, I think, going through the Q and A that the parents were talking about, the similar ones. Would it be easier if I, like, just go three or four? Are we going to go three or four each? Or what's the deal?
My suggestion, if people are open to it, is that we, you go ahead with your questions first because it might, it might change the questions that people are asking. So rather than reading what's on the Q and A, this way people have the opportunity to ask their questions. But why don't you go forward with yours? Pam, is that...
Yeah, could, um, we, Joe, could we let Latonya Mackinols in as a panelist as well? And I'm going to ask my team to chime in wherever they're comfortable. Actually, I'm going to, whoops, wrong person.
I just promoted her.
Okay, thank you. So go ahead, Ted.
So, so I, these are my optics looking out. I think on the testing, you may need another day, or the facility down at Vinton Square.
What, what, okay, so I have, let me answer that question as they go because I just, everybody may have it. So we've been told there could be an opportunity that they'd be brought on-site for us and that we wouldn't have to go someplace. And so there's a subgroup of our district task force that is working on that, and it could be two days. But what we're working to do is bring it to the schools to make it easier. So there's probably five different ways it can be done. And we're trying to make it easiest for our faculty and staff.
Oh, I'm sure.
And I don't know what that plan is yet, but this is, this is a new development to have everybody tested.
Okay. Thank, thank you. On the assessment, are we paying that? Can we get reimbursed on that? And can that study be used for the new building committee with Suzanne?
I'm going to have Martha Seibert, are you comfortable chiming in on this? I could answer it, but I'd rather you.
So we are going to use some of our federal funds, care funds, to fund this study, the assessment. We're entering into an agreement with LBA for hours worked, so it's not, it was something we'd be paying for what they're doing. And yes, we can use it for other uses, absolutely. It's our, it's our work product. Once it's done, it's ours. I'm hoping that we might be able to harvest some information from the Habib report that we have at the middle school. I'm hoping that they'll be able to harvest some information from the work that they've already done for us with the Hadley School Building Project. But this is really laser-focused on HVAC systems and the impact of air quality in the classrooms. So it's a very limited, it's very limited in scope right now. We might enlarge the scope depending upon what other needs the district has. They certainly can help us with other things, but right now, it's very specific to that.
Okay. The start and release, I'm sure that that would be staggered. The sibling issue, I know that that came up at the district meeting. I know that the metro transportation came up. That I, I feel comfortable with all those. You know, I, I think for the young kids, the mask breaks have to be a lot more frequent. And I, I would hope that any kids coming in a little delayed in the first couple of weeks that we try to do this aren't penalized for being tardy. I do think one of the things that came up in the district meeting was the 240 that were unengaged, right? So I thought that number was really, really high for us. And then it was explained that the unengaged, that's not the total student. That could be one class out of what they're participating in, correct?
I'm going to have Dr. Bacon chime in.
Yeah, when I calculated the 240, I really paid attention to students who were unengaged in one or more of their primary core academic areas. So it's, there were more kids than that who were unengaged, say, in an elective... So it's, there were more kids than that who were unengaged, say, in an elective they might be taking. But I really concentrated on the kids who were not engaged in their core, their four core academics and foreign language.
And I know that the superintendent has a, for the community has, um, a, a method of reaching out to those unengaged individuals. And then I'll, I'll, I feel like I'm, I feel like I'm, uh, rattling them off quick, but I, I think we should take advantage of, uh, some signboards, um, in front of the schools to remind parents about drop-offs or pickups because everyone's busy. A lot of the people have, uh, you know, both parents are working. Um, sometimes we forget, we're, we're only human, but I think that communication has to be repetitive. It has to be frequent, consistent, and in a structured manner as we ask our kids to do that. And, um, Martha Raymond brought that up, that that's what the kids need, um, in the district meeting, I think it was. But I, I would like to, I would like to see something like that. And the last, uh, question, kindergarten placement? Was that in the presentation? Did I gloss over that? Or how about the placement? Is that coming? Is that being worked on?
It's, it's complete. So we do, we do have all the students, um, assigned currently and we were really kind of waiting for our vote to figure out what we're going to be doing and on the calendar to, and tell parents what school they're going to be assigned to. Um, and then let them know when screening would be. Obviously the remote, actually, if you end up with remote, the screening wouldn't occur because you can't, we would, it is an in-person screening. It's not a, um, live, it's not a Zoom screening, so we might have to shift some of those things around, but, but yes. School assignments are done, people will find out. It's just class assignments won't come out till after.
Thank you, Martha. And lastly, I know it came up, uh, especially Martha and Lisa Julian Hayes. For the kids with dysentery issues, obviously we, we are, uh, we're keenly aware of the kids on IEPs, 504s, and I know Martha and Lisa Julian are, uh, uh, are working on that. But Pam, thank you for, um, thank you for that presentation. It was very detailed. And I'm sure there'll be other questions. I'll, I'll mute myself now for a little bit.
Could I jump in real quick? Martha, I want to, I want to, uh, be more specific with you, um, in the question about kindergarten. Um, I know that kindergarten and, uh, come up, incoming kindergarten parents are as anxious as the rest of us. When should they, when will they hear about their assignments?
So I would anticipate next week, by the end of next week, we would be able to, um, email them out. Usually what would happen is that would come out of the student services office by, um, actual mail, but this year, actually, they're already in Aspen. We're waiting for the rollover where we push every student forward by grade. That will happen, I believe, Friday. So by next week, actually, everybody will have the capability at, from the principal will at each one of those schools to be able to email their kindergarten families directly, say, you have been placed at this school. And so they will know. At least they'll know their school assignment at that point. I mean, I want everyone to remember, if anyone's watching from, who's looking, wondering where they're going to go, we have two kindergartens at Stanley. We have two at Clark and we have three at Hadley. And please note the school assignments are first based upon, um, students who need district programming. Siblings are placed together and then we equitably distribute the rest of the students based upon, um, class size. You can be assigned to any school that you're under two miles to. I will tell you, there are instances where their placements have, a person could see the school from their street and they are assigned to a different school and it really does depend upon where people live every year. So I just want people to know that, that it's possible, but really you could be assigned to almost any school in the district and be within two miles. That's the regulation.
Could I also just say that, um, just as a reminder, what wasn't in my presentation, I did say two weeks ago, is that regardless of what happens, there are families that have, all families have the right to continue with remote for the year. And once the school committee votes on this plan and we can start moving forward on it, Dr. Bacon's office is going to send out an additional survey to find out how many parents hearing the plan that the school committee voted on would choose to keep their children remote regardless of moving to a hybrid model. So we're going to be looking to collect that data as well.
Um, can I, can I jump in and ask a question about that? So can, can we talk about what the difference is between continuing remote and deciding to homeschool your kid? Because I think that has budgetary implications for us in the future. So we need to be really careful about how, what that looks like, right?
Homeschooling is a whole different process. I don't know.
I want to make sure people understand, like, that remote learning requires engagement with our district staff and, and, and following our curriculum, not taking their kid out and homeschooling them, which is something completely different and, and we need to just make sure that people understand that difference so that kids are counted in our October enrollment counts, right?
Correct. Um, home, I don't know, Dr. Bacon, if you want to speak on homeschooling, the differences, but there are specific criteria and submissions that have to happen.
But I think a lot of people keep saying, I'll just homeschool my kid. And I just want to make sure that they understand, like, homeschooling is different than remote learning and we have to really make sure that, that we're counting kids that we're educating so that we get credit for them when our foundation budget comes up for review and we have the right number of kids and our funding for next year and everything.
Well, so I think to, to add on a little bit to what Suzanne is saying, it's not even just making sure that they're counted because I think that that is less, uh, it really is more that we could run into a problem here if people do say that they're going to homeschool for the year and then next year they are back in school because then we don't have the funding for them.
Right.
Is that?
Well, they would have to unenroll their child, right? If the child is enrolled at Swanscott Public Schools, then they are our student.
Martha, Martha Cybert?
Yeah, so I just want to explain the chapter 70 component and then maybe Dr. Bacon can talk about the, the nuts and bolts of homeschooling. So if, if a family were to decide to homeschool and withdraw, so they would draw, they wouldn't be part of our October 1 number. It wouldn't necessarily impact us next year because chapter 70 always has a whole harmless. So chapter 70 would suddenly go down by hundreds of thousands of dollars because of that whole harmless provision. If it were to continue, then, then we would not get more chapter 70 funding, if that makes any sense, but, but there is a home hel- held harmless component to chapter 70. So I'll let, I'll yield to Dr. Bacon so she can explain the, the, the procedures to homeschool, if that's of interest.
So if a family chooses to homeschool their child, there's an application process. It's on, available on our website. You fill out the application, which describes the educational program that you're going to provide for your student. You send that application in, my office reviews it and we may ask you more questions if it's not clear enough or ultimately mostly we approve the application. Then your child is withdrawn from Swanscott Public Schools and you are responsible providing all the curriculum instruction to that student for the next year. During remote learning, what will happen is that that school remains and that child remains enrolled in the Swanscott Public Schools and our educators are responsible for designing the curriculum and delivering the instruction for the student. But I think what people, what families really need to understand is that in remote learning, it's not like we're there or we're engaging with your students for six and a half hours a day. There'll be periods in the day where the students are expected to be on a Zoom call with their teachers, but there'll be other periods on the day where it'll be your responsibility within the home to help direct that student's learning, or if your student's old enough, they can do it on their own. And we realize that that's a significant challenge for families and especially working parents. So I think that's part of the reason why we're eager to get as many students back into the classroom for as much time as possible when, when it's safe for all of us to do that.
I think that was well said.
Suzanne, do you want to, do you have more questions since you've got the floor?
Um, I have a question about absentee, absenteeism or how we're, how we're taking attendance and how we're ensuring, um, where we're looking at high school. I know, I know we're going to talk about policy, but just to make sure that high school kids are getting the credits that they need to graduate and, um, and some of the electives that we didn't really talk about as part of the plan.
So, um, I think Superintendent Angelakis went over this very, um, very briefly, but they, the Phase Four Committee has recommended that students at the middle and high school enroll in all the same courses that they would be enrolled in just as if they were going to be in person all year. So all the curricular opportunities will be there for students. They'll be enrolled in the courses. In the, in the guidance for the fall, DESI is requiring that we take attendance and report attendance every day for, both for remote learning students and for students who are either in person or hybrid. And there's, there'll be expectations. What's developing in the Phase Four Committee right now is what that student day will really look like. Whenever students are learning at home and they'll be required live events over the course, multiple required live events over the course of any given school day for each student.
I guess that's what I was asking. I was trying to see, like, if you log in once out of, like, the three times you're supposed to log in or if you, is, does work completion count if you, if you don't, like, log in, if you complete? I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I'm sure you're making a plan, but I just, you know, I'm sure it's going to be different for different grades, so.
Yes, and all that will be detailed in the, in the education plan that we're working on. It'll be released, you know, in the next couple of weeks.
Um, what was my other one? Absentees? Wait, go on. I just have to find the page I was taking my notes on. Karen, go ahead.
Want us to come back to you? Karen or John, do you want to jump in?
Can I go? Um, so I know that what we're talking about tonight are, are recommendations and, you know, we're trying to, you know, hone in on a, a plan that we can then actually make all the details for. So there's probably not going to be every detail that people want to know tonight. But, but it sounds like after we get through the remote period and we're looking at this hybrid model, it sounded as if it was approximately three hours a day per student in school. Is that correct? A session that was three in the morning and a session that was three in the afternoon.
Three hours, and this is the beauty of that model. Three, and I don't take credit for it. My team really worked hard in coming to this. Three hours a day, four days a week of in-person instruction. So when those students go home, they're following up on their assignments and they're going to be held accountable the next day when they come back into class. So it is as close to normalcy as we can possibly get. The, the Wednesday, you know, part of why we're doing a half-day Wednesday is because we have to consider the teacher contract. Teachers' days don't go till three o'clock. Most of them are here till three o'clock, but by giving a half-day on Wednesday, it makes up that difference from their contractual hours to the extra time we're asking them to stay till three o'clock. So a half-day on Wednesday makes up that time. But keep in mind, we are bound by contractual hours for our educators and in order to make that work, we have to compensate it some way.
So that was part of my question about the extra long day because you said we would, we would get to that. Okay. So we're talking about splitting the kids potentially in half, half in the morning, half in the afternoon. And we know that some students might opt out and be remote completely, but what if a half of a class doesn't have any opt-outs, say, and that's still too many kids to fit in a particular room?
That's where we're going. I was referring to looking at other spaces.
Okay.
Are we going to utilize, um, media centers? Are we going to utilize all of the spaces available to us based on the building assessments we get from LBA? You know, they're going to articulate for us the available spaces that have good air quality, have, and meet the ventilation requirements. And then they might not be in a typical classroom. We might have, um, one group of kids in a different space. But we can't start that planning till all of, first of all, till the school committee approves the plan and votes on it. And secondly, until we get that data and information from our building assessment.
Okay. And then, so also the, the morning session and the afternoon session, it sounds like would sort of be replicas of each other. The teachers are doing the same thing with this group of students and then the same thing with the second. Okay. Um, is, is that kind of model, does that give enough time for the kids in the higher grades, like high schoolers, to, to hit all those different? I mean, I feel like they have more classes than kids in younger grades or more areas that they're trying to cover. Is that going to give them enough time? Are they still going to have like a waterfall schedule?
Their schedule may change and that's the work that the high school team is doing right now. They're reporting back to me on Friday. We have a meeting on Friday to follow up on that. Whether it's the, the sample I gave or it's a varied, uh, version of that, that is really a building level decision.
Okay. Okay.
And also just from special education viewpoint, that schedule is not reflective of what perhaps an IEP, a student on an IEP may be following. All the regulatory requirements of students on IEPs remain in effect. So. Yeah, well, the IEP service delivery models, um, we need to, um, provide that instruction to the best of our ability. So, so I just want to note that, that anybody sitting at home who's looking at that schedule, um, I, students with, um, disabilities will still be handled on an individual basis through the team process as we always have.
Understood. Okay. Um, I think that's all I have right this second.
John?
Thanks, Amy. Um, actually, I'm going to go back to Martha Raymond. One of my questions was on, uh, special education as well and what I did not hear was, um, you said, yes, the teams will have to address on a case by case. Does that mean that, uh, children who, for example, in IEPs would commit in person? Even if it was remote or they would be remote as well?
So that's going to be something for the committee to decide. What I will say is that there are children in our district clearly where remote learning did not work at all and would not work forward. And to me, the only time that it would be, um, and what should be happening is if the, um, governor has said there's a stay-at-home order and people cannot leave their homes. So I'm aware of that. Pam, our superintendent is aware of that and school committee is aware of that. So that is something that will be handled on an individual basis, um, with the team, um, looking forward. So I guess that is what about, what I would say. So I know that. And the parents know that. Um, and we will handle it. It's a team process. So there's nothing in a plan or, you know, anything you know laterally that we could do because all the regulatory requirements of IDA remain in effect right now. Did before in the spring, do now and will moving forward.
All right. And thank you, Martha. Um, this might be, might be a Pam question. And thank you for your presentation, Pam. I, I, I'm not sure how we arrived at, uh, the start date of 10/26. I'm just wondering if you can provide additional context. It seems, seems like kind of a long period of time to go with remote before we can go over.
So we were, if I'm looking at, um, the calendar and we are starting on the 16th, that would be the first day for students. Then if I count the following week, the following week, the following week, I was originally at four weeks, but that's a half week. I don't want to start on a Wednesday. So thinking that we'll start on the 26th would take us out about five weeks. So one, two, three, four, five, takes us about four and a half, five weeks. Because the start date is no longer September 1st, it's now September 16th. Does that make sense?
It, it does. And, um, if we're assuming that 10/26 is going to be the start of the hybrid, what, I, I'm not sure what objective criteria there are if, what would prevent that date from, from, that, from implementation on that date if, if we had to, what often have remote learning for a longer period of time? What would be a trigger, for example?
Um, in my presentation, I referred to the, the virus data and guidelines from the state. So for example, say there were a spike in Massachusetts and the governor called the state of emergency again and the commissioner said, you're doing remote learning. So it would be based on the, the virus data. Would be based on the health data. It would be based on the guidelines from CDC and DPH. So, um, that is our target to go. It would just be any changes that were out of the district's control that were more at a state level that would dictate staying remote.
Would there be, sorry to jump in here, would there, I, I'm assuming that we would also have triggers that are more localized?
Yes.
Um, and is, are those, are those still being defined?
They're being defined in the safety plan. It's in development. It's just not. They're being defined in the safety plan. It's in development. It's just not ready to be presented tonight. It may be ready to be presented on the twelfth, which would be nice. That would be my target, but it was not ready tonight.
Your audio just cut out, um, after you said, or maybe it was my audio.
Uh-oh. It may be ready for the twelfth, but it wasn't ready for tonight.
Okay.
All right. And, and Pam, just kind of the flip side of this, um, you know, assuming things kick over on ten twenty-six, uh, like you're proposing, um, what would be, what would be a trigger for back-to-school full-in-person? I mean, what, are there objective criteria you'd be looking at for that as well?
Again, I'd be looking from guidance from the health agencies and from the state. Nothing would make me happier than everyone saying January second or third, you're all back in person. I would be so excited, but that's not a local determination I'd be making. It would be guidance from the health agencies and from the governor and from the commissioner.
Okay, and I just have a couple more, uh, questions. So if, if a parent wanted to, um, do full remote, uh, even after ten twenty-six, will they be able to do, and I'm sorry if I missed this earlier, will they be able to have their children, children watch, like on a Zoom presentation, like they'll actually see the, the teacher instructing the, the class and they can watch it on video?
It would not, I will refer to Dr. Bacon on this, but we're not talking about live streaming. We've done some research on it and Dr. Bacon has reiterated that it's not best practice. So Dr. Bacon, can I throw this your way?
Sure. Um, if students are fully remote, what they can expect is that the main instruction will be asynchronous, which means that they will be recorded lessons that their teachers or will have made or assigned, that they will watch to get instruction in the new content. Their contact with the teachers will be in smaller groups for the purposes of doing guided practice, doing assessments, doing things that, that are more appropriate uses of li, of the Zoom interactions, which are really meant to be interactions rather than just the student watching a screen of their teacher teaching in class without any interaction. That really is not best practice. So that would be the difference. There, there, we're not anticipating any kind of live streaming of in, what's going on in class to the students who are learning at home. It's a different model. It's required for effective remote learning.
Is there, can I just ask a follow-up, Jean? Is there a, is there a, um, an auxiliary staff that's like helping the, the classroom teacher manage the remote, that the kids that are remaining on remote? Because presumably he or she will be teaching during the day, like to sort of, I just.
Right. So that's the next thing. So again, um, you know, the phase four committee, we just, for the past week, we've been working on what our fully remote schedule will work, will look like. And we were waiting for some, you know, decisions from the school committee before we look at that hybrid schedule and figure out how we're going to make that work. But what we have determined very early on in our process was that there's not going to be a separate curriculum. That there's one curriculum that teachers are designing with one set of lessons that are going to be housed either in Google Classroom or CSO. And those will be the basis for all of the instruction and learning that's going to take place, whether a kid is, um, whether students are in front of you or students are learning remotely.
Um, I lost my follow-up. Oh, my God. All right, that's great. That, that's helpful. I, I feel like, I feel like the teachers, um, it's, I just not, I guess I don't completely understand where they're developing their lesson or when, you know?
And we're, what we've also put in the phase four plan, um, is that teachers, again, to lighten the load, you know, in a typical school environment, most teachers are planning individually for their own classes. In this remote environment or this hybrid environment, we are asking all teachers who are teaching the same course to plan together. We piloted that model in the spring with the elementary teachers and, um, it was very well received by the teachers in terms of that collaboration. So teachers could kind of divide and conquer. So every student in the fourth grade got the same writing lesson for that week or the same math lesson. And that was the way we did it from K to four. And we're extending that model five through twelve, um, for the upcoming year. So that will give teachers, you know, uh, so, for most teachers, some teachers at the high school do teach singleton courses where there's no other person teaching that course other than them. But most of the courses throughout the district, there are multiple teacher, people teaching so that they'll be able to share the responsibility of planning for that course.
If, if we go with this, um, Pam, I don't know, or maybe Dr. Bacon, if we go with this model and we don't start in-person or, or the hybrid model till, till the end of October, is there going to be an opportunity between now and October to maybe start bringing some kids in in small groups? Or is that just something we're not even thinking about?
No, what, um, it's very interesting that you say that. In meeting with the union leadership on Monday morning, that's how quickly things change. I talked a lot about connecting with families individually or in smaller groups, like perhaps bringing one or two kids in at a time, checking in with families. I, I, my focus is the kids, but I do recognize the challenges that families face. I face the same in, in raising my daughter and being a full-time working parent. But, um, as things roll out and as the staff and faculty get comfortable being back in the buildings themselves, it would make sense and it would be in the best interest to start bringing children in to make those connections in person. Um, that is something that we were discussing with union leadership that I want to continue to discuss. It doesn't mean that a child wouldn't set foot in the building. We just need to figure out the, the right time and the comfort level of our educators.
Great. Thank you.
And Amy, I have, I have another question for, for, for Dr. Bacon, just, um, uh, we talked about, you know, live streaming in a remote environment, um, you know, once, once we reach ten twenty-six, but what about, um, from the beginning, from nine sixteen to the ten twenty-three? Um, will that be, will, will there be a teacher live time instructing the students or will that be a recorded thing as well?
Again, the, the best practice suggests that the lessons themselves, the delivery of instruction is recorded so that students in a remote environment don't just have the one shot while the teacher is live to do it. They can go back to the recording, they can pause the recording, they can, they can do what they need to do to really assimilate the content that's being delivered remotely. Um, so that, that would be the case whether we're full remote or in the hybrid model. That there were, most of the lessons will be delivered asynchronously. And then, again, what we are doing, which is different than the spring, is we're, we are requiring much more face-to-face Zoom interaction, live Zoom interaction between teachers and students than there was required in the spring. So in the spring, we, we had a kind of a minimum requirement. Some teachers did a lot more than the minimum requirement, but now we're raising the bar so that all teachers are be going to, going to be doing a lot more face-to-face time with their students. And again, the face-to-face time is to make sure that students understand the material, to offer guided practice, to do more interactive activities with the students and bring some of that, those social aspects of school, which are so, um, sorely missed during remote learning into the live environment.
So has any thought been given to doing a live instruction then if they needed to go back to a, a recorded session? Um, like you said, for the repeat reinforcement, any thought given to that? I'm just looking more from a structural standpoint. If they knew they had a class at nine thirty, um, and their teacher was going to be live time, you know, that, I think that's a structure that a, a child may, they may respond to a little bit better, frankly.
Right. And that, that will, that will be the structure. So the students will have several times over the course of the day where you're expected to be there live with your teacher. But what's going to be happening during those, those sessions is tailored to the remote environment and best practices in the remote environment rather than, for example, watching a teacher present for 10 minutes with no student interaction. That's something that can happen in an asynchronous video. Rather than having it, have, wasting the precious live time we have for something that's not interactive.
Okay.
Can, can I just jump in as a follow-up? So, Dr. Bacon, am I understanding it right? So that if I were, uh, I'll use my, my eighth grader as an example. So if she were in the cohort that was there in the morning and she would have these various check-ins or live interactions with her teachers, that would be the synchronous component. But when, in the afternoon, when her other co, when the other cohort is in, then she would be, then there would be asynchronous, an asynchronous component to it. Is that?
So in the afternoon, she might watch a, a video about the content and the instruction for what's going to be discussed in class the next day. So instead of, so her teacher would be there on the video or she'd assign a video to explain, okay, this is the new content. This is what you're, you know, this is what's happening, or not what's happening. This is the new content. You know, you can think of like what most of us experience as a little lecture or a mini lecture or something where there's a presentation of material. So that she would watch independently in the afternoon. And then the next morning, when she's live with her teacher, she'd say, okay, now let's talk about what you learned. Let's have you apply what you saw in the video to this problem and let me guide you through how we're going to solve this problem or do whatever.
So I, I, I asked the question because I think of all of the questions that came in from parents, um, this past week on that, that Google document, the, 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 the piece that stood out for me were the amount of, of parents who felt that the asynchronous learning was just too unstructured. Um, that it, that it just led to, uh, pressure on the parents to homeschool or to feel like they were homeschooling. Um, and to, to, uh, just frankly feel like there wasn't a lot going on. So I, I guess for me, I, I want to know, I, I like the idea that there's this half and half, but I, I, I think I just want to, um, need, I, I guess I need reassurance that there is still that fair component of synchronous learning, not only for the learning, but also for the connectivity of the kids, the, like getting to know their teachers, developing relationships.
Um, Yes. So again, as I said, in the spring, you know, again, everybody was kind of learning and we're building up to people having a comfort level with doing remote instruction, having a comfort level with making videos of themselves. There's a lot of things that people had to learn in the spring in a very short amount of time. And I think our, our staff did a really excellent job of ramping up their skills really fast to try to do the best they could. Um, now that most people have those skills under their belt, we can, the phase four committee, which is a committee of about thirty people of both, um, teachers and administrators, we're all working together. You know, everybody's sort of in agreement that we need to up the level of live interaction between the teachers and the students, even when the students are at home. Right? So, you know, for our fully remote plan, which we've just been working on, you know, you, a family could expect that, you know, three or four times during the day, their student is going to be expected to be on live with their teacher for a period of twenty to thirty minutes. But it's not going to be all at once and there's going to be time during between when it, I, and we fully recognize it's going to be, it's going to continue to be challenging for families, um, you know, especially with younger students. You can't just leave a five-year-old on their own for six hours and expect them to navigate this and by themselves. And we understand that that's a significant challenge for families. But, you know, at this point, there's not much we can do to, to help with that. We can do, right, we can't, you know, we can do the best we can do when we, when we do remote learning.
John, I want to throw it back to you because I jumped in.
Oh, no worries. Um, and, and Dr. Bacon, thank you for that. Um, I, I think I'm kind of with Amy's, um, with, with her thoughts as she just said, you know, just wants to get that comfort level. And I, I, I know I'm not quite there yet. Um, and I, I just, on, on kind of a separate question, just, um, we talked about tents earlier and I, I guess, and, and apologies if I missed it, but if, if we're putting up tents now and the kids won't be back till the end of October, i- is there some plan for those tents in the interim period?
Well, um, it's a good question, actually. Um, we're excited to have them in, but, um, maybe we'll delay the installation of them.
We certainly could until after hurricane season.
We could.
And we, we were working to get them as, as quickly as possible because, as you can imagine, there is a demand on tents now as there are for Chromebooks and other things that people are using to be creative, to bring businesses back and, and a lot of school districts are looking at using them as well, so.
I, I think my question was more, did we have any, any thoughts, you know, were we going to do anything outdoors or presumably it's, it's a little bit safer?
Um, well, I know that if we do do what I was speaking with to the, at, with the union and Suzanne just brought up, if we start to bring kids back to meet with their teachers in small groups, that would be a nice place to do it, is to do it outside in those tents. And so as Martha Cyber said, we were just looking at getting them as fast as we can. And we know that with a lot of things that we're trying, materials and supplies, we're trying to get, they give us a projected date and then it, it doesn't quite occur. But, um, Mrs. Raymond came up with some great ideas in terms of purchases for supplies. Pool noodles for the little ones to show them what six feet apart is. Um, plastic containers for individual supplies so that everybody keeps their individual supplies. And if we go to remote learning, they take their little bucket of things. So, um, some really creative things that we've been thinking of and purchasing with the monies that have become available to us. So.
Are we, are we thinking about, like, I don't know, maybe this is a phase four, um, uh, tactical thing, but are we thinking about how we schedule families that have multiple children? Like, do we, is it better to have all the kids on, you know, in the morning sessions? I, I just was sort of curious about how that might work for families.
We've been talking about siblings, whether it be busing or whether it be, you know, the group A or group B to make it easiest for families. We feel like having them all in at the same time would be, but again, maybe that's a survey question. And depending on the ages of the children, you know, families might have a different idea.
That sort of leads into, how, how will the A and B be determined? How will you figure that out? Who's in A, who's B, or is it just like by last name or random or?
We haven't gone that far. We're looking for school committee approval of this plan.
Um, I would add to that, not only, um, will, does that also mean that, and this is probably a question for you to answer later. Uh, if you're in, on Team A and you're in the morning, are you always in the morning or do you eventually have, are you in the afternoons? Like, what, the following month or the following week?
Depends how long the hybrid goes on.
Yeah, I think about that, especially, uh, I think about the high school students who would all be pretty bent about being in the morning version versus the afternoon version. Um, and I think about the, the younger kids whose parents would probably prefer them to be in the, in the earlier version because they're probably a little bit more, um, aware and awake, um, than in the afternoon version. So it's like, no matter where you are, there's, you know, it, it, uh, like we were talking about last week, there isn't a good, uh, one-size-fits-all. Um, but, um, I'd like to throw out that possibility, um, as we talk about it.
Yeah. Can I, can I?
Hold on a second. John, are you, are you, did you get through your questions?
Uh, I just had one more and I'm just curious, um, as far as grading, are we going back to a letter grade system?
Yes. Jean, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just said yes as well.
Good. Um, I've got a couple of questions. Um, the first is about masks. Uh, is last week, Pam, uh, you had said, uh, most and encouraged to wear masks. Um, are we, um, has there been any change to that? I think about, like, it, it, I know that particularly, uh, kids who, um, have sensory issues, that this is a problem, but, um, I, is it, is it safe to have anybody maskless?
Um, no, and, and that's a great question. And there were some people, there were some families on the public comment, um, two weeks ago at our school committee meeting and talking about how their littlest ones are doing well with masks. And we, as a group, have come up with, we would require masks pre-K through twelve. Um, we would not, it would not be an option, um, in order to keep everyone safe. Now, um, Mrs. Raymond has talked about some of our medias kids, you know, may need lessons in how to wear them and that would occur outdoors and that might occur on a different schedule. The schedule I presented to you tonight is a, a, just a typical schedule for a general education student. When we get to the work and the meat of this and in the plan, there's, there are going to be one-offs. There are going to be groups of students that are going to be different and we recognize that. But just knowing that we feel it's best to take our time to open up the schools and let the educators get assimilated and then go into the hybrid based on the data of the virus and the health guidance from the, um, health agencies. That's what I'm looking for support. The rest of these details are going to play out and, and, and be worked out logistically over the next several weeks.
Um, I had a couple of other questions. Um, not so much a, a question, but really a comment. And I think to some degree, um, Dr. Bacon, you answered. And I think to some degree, um, Dr. Bacon, you answered it. Uh, you know, one of the things that I am struggling with is the, I, the sort of back and forth of remote versus hybrid or remote hybrid back in school. And, and I know that some of the, the triggers and the policies still have to be ironed out. But I think as much as we can create consistency between each one of these so that, you know, if there is an outbreak and a whole section can't go back, that, you know, to sort of be flip-flopping back and forth, you know, that consistency is so critical. It's one of the things that we heard a lot from, um, the parents who've responded over the last two weeks. I think especially parents of younger, um, younger kids. So that's really more of a quest, of a comment than a question. I do have a question about, um, our Metco kids and busing. And are they, are we running two sets of buses? Do we know?
Yeah, so, so right now we do run two buses. We run a bus for our elementary and middle school cohort of students and a bus for our students, our cohort of students at the high school. All told, I believe it's fifty-two students in total. Again, as, as Superintendent Angelak has stated, we'll have to get into the specifics of whether our Metco cohort of students would have to be all A or all B. If we were to split them up, we may need additional buses, which would be an additional expense that, um, would be significant. Um, and I do believe that after talking with NRT this morning, that we should be able to have them safely on the bus, given the guidance that Desi gave us with one student per seat.
Okay. Ted?
Pam, on the nurses? For, are we doing extra nurses or where did we stand with that?
It depends what the plan is. If it's remote, you know, for the first five weeks or so, do we need that additional staffing? But if it's hybrid, we're going to need to plan. So at this time, there's no additional staffing, but it depends on, it really depends on the direction of the plan.
And, uh, just two more, they, the specials, um, ESPs, chorus and band, that is still yet to be figured out?
You, you mentioned ESPs, um, yes, we're, we're working out the details of some of those. But one of the things that we will likely be talking about with you and where we're at. So at this time, we had a lengthy conversation at our central office meeting about, you know, position reductions and, um, not taking that position yet because there might be ways to utilize our staff in different manner if that is negotiated and bargained. And so we're, we're not proposing any budget cuts and reductions in force right now.
Thank you.
If we do, uh, go the remote to hybrid route, I know we have some time to figure this out. But is there, um, will we be, I have some very specific questions about testing. And I know that there's talk about testing our staff, but what about testing our kids? What about kids who are coming from, um, what their parents define as high-risk homes? I know, um, uh, you know, like, you know, kid, children of, of, um, frontline workers or, uh, I think even, I, I think I even saw something somewhere about, um, uh, flight attendants or pilots. Do the, are, let me, let me rephrase this, are all of the, it's two questions. Is there talk about testing and is that something that we potentially with CARES Act money would be providing? And B, are all students entitled to come back to, to school? Or are there, or, or are there children who are deemed, um, high-risk enough that they have to stay remote?
I truly will have to get back to you on this. And get some guidance from look, relooking at DPH and CDC and whatever protocol calls the town has come out with. I, I'm, I may be speaking out of turn, Martha Seibert, but I don't see that we would offer the testing. But I do see that we would implement some kind of protocol or procedure and, um, that would be implemented. But that could change, um, just as of tonight, I'd have to get back to you on that.
I, I'm with the superintendent, I think we would want to get back to you on that one. I, I have seen some discussion of testing in other districts, but what that rollout looks like. I know the governor alluded to it yesterday in one of his speeches that he's ordering three million rapid tests, that you'd have a response in twenty minutes. But he really didn't provide much more information. He said, stay tuned. So, um, we're staying tuned. But he did mention that those would be available for, um, for schools, some of those testings, so.
And was there an answer about, um, requirements for remote learning versus, um, choice for home learning, uh, remote learning?
I'm not sure what that question is.
So, we know that some parents can opt to stay in remote learning even after we come back to a hybrid. However, are there, um, does, will we say no to anybody? But is everybody entitled to come back?
Everybody's entitled to come back as long as they're following our policies and our safety guidelines.
Okay.
Are, are you asking if they can flip-flop back and forth between the two, like select remote?
She's, she's asking if someone's in a high risk, has a high-risk parent, can we deny them? But that's kind of what you're getting at.
Yeah.
I think that's why we're talking about a hundred, you know, that, wearing masks and six feet, having proper ventilation and following all the cleaning protocols, like, you know, that, that's why we're so insistent upon that because there's no way we're going to be able to control for all those other variables. But we can control for those and that is what the science has shown. Especially mask-wearing is a critical protector from passing this virus. So yes, if we, my goal is if we get somebody positive in our school, they did not get it in our school. They got it from a community place. And if they do bring it into school, it does not spread, right? They may be positive, but if we maintain mask-wearing and six feet apart, that anybody who is near that student should theoretically not get it.
To be clear, I'm not asking this because I want to prevent anybody from coming. I'm, I'm, I'm asking it as, uh, from concerned parents.
We, we will, we will get a definitive answer for you. I do want, I am going to throw this to Dr. Bacon for a moment because, um, I see we have seventy-seven questions and it's been two hours on this and we have a budget presentation and I don't want to ignore those. But I, Dr. Bacon noticed the questions about how we chose AM PM. And so I would love her to be co-host, have co-host privileges and to share her screen with the data that we collected.
Does, uh, do, do I do that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Hold on, let me just figure this out.
Hold on, I can do it for you, Amy.
No, no, let me do it.
Hopper on Jean's name and then do more.
I did, I'm doing it, I'm doing it, I'm learning. I think Ms., I think Dr. Bacon, you are now, now a co-host.
Yep, I think so. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Um, yes, but it's, it's, if you could maximize it, that would be great. We're seeing a lot of, we're seeing all of your other stuff too. Okay.
Yeah, I know, you see my stuff across the top, but, um, hopefully that's big enough for people to see. So this is the, um, the results from the parent survey that we did in early July. So when we ta- talked about like what hybrid model should we recommend? These are the results when we asked parents, what would you prefer? So, you know, the, the plurality preferred a morning and afternoon model as opposed to a kind of every other day or like a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, or alternating by weeks. So that's why when, uh, I think the superintendent took this into account when she's recommending the AM PM model. So I know there's been a number of people in the chat who are saying, well, why aren't we doing it this way? Because this is what the, the preference of the community was. Obviously, it's not going to work for every family, but that's where it came from.
Thank you.
All right.
I have, I have another question, but maybe it's for Mrs. Raymond or I, I don't, sort of about kindergarten and first grade education. And Dr. Bacon, do we have, do we have like a plan to help those kids have paper and pencil tasks, like to take stuff home from, like, to, to either get things mailed to them or pick up packets or do, do stuff that's more like kindergarten and first grade work rather than typing or, I don't know, just, just making sure that kindergarten and first grade zooming and remote education looks different than everyone else's.
So I, I can talk a little bit about the preschool and I would envision K one is going to be very similar. A lot of the work that we're going to be doing prior to starting school is pretty much taking apart our entire classrooms and dividing up all of our learning materials so that each student would then would have their own individual learning set of materials. So if you think about our literacy foundations books, each one, what, each student would have their own packet of that. Manipulatives for math, puzzles, books, writing materials, art materials. All of those things would be separated out so that each student would have their own access to those learning materials that, um, they would have in person or would also be able to take home remote. And packets would not just be on Google Classroom, we would be giving hard copies to families too.
And, and we're, and we're treating these supplies like we're treating Chromebooks, right? Like you're checking out, you have to check them back in kind of thing.
Sure.
I'm just.
We, yes.
I can't imagine how that's going to work, but yeah.
Well, we're in a, you know, we have to, we're in a pandemic, like, we got to meet the kids' needs. Like, I, you know, I, I'm, you know, I think.
I, I mean, I completely one-hundred percent agree.
I, I want kids with manipulatives, so I don't need them on screens doing this. That's not helpful for their learning.
I'm, I'm at the point where, um, it's not about why we can't do things, it's how we get things done. And it's not, it's not going to, it's not going to be easy no matter what we do. And we're going to make mistakes and we're going to try to foresee those issues and challenges ahead of time and try to mitigate as many as we can. But, you know, it's, it's so easy to sit here and believe me, to sit here and say, how are we going to do this? How are we going to do this? We can't do this. We have to do this. And we just have to make a decision to move forward and find a way to roll out these plans so that we get our, we see those little faces, we get our teachers and educators back in here in a very safe and healthy way. Amy, you're.
Okay, so with that, I want to be mindful of a couple of things. So fir- first is Pam, to your point, we have been, um, rightfully talking about this for close to two hours. But I want to acknowledge that there's still a lot to be worked out. And that our next step here, um, for the school committee is to, uh, like, uh, is to approve the general, the broad outline here so that your team can put some meat on the bone.
It is to approve the plan of going remote until October twenty-sixth and transitioning to hybrid till the twenty-third and transitioning to the hybrid on the twenty-sixth. That is the plan. The, the meat on the bones and the details of how we're going to work it out, um, would come, will come after you, you approve this plan and you vote on it.
Can I ask a question just quickly? If we, if, upon voting upon it, that we're fully remote, is that fully remote mean that no students will be entering the building between the September sixteenth date and the October twenty-third?
I don't think so. No, because I heard Pam, I heard the superintendent say that there, there could be opportunities for small groups to come in. You know, I, like, for example, one of the questions I get is, how is it that I can go down to Phillips Field and see all of these teams practicing, but my kids can't have gym class? So, like, I would put that out there and say, are we, and, and I'm going to assume, uh, superintendent, that this is part of the things that we'd be working out.
Yes, because I am very concerned, as is Mrs. Raymond, about our high-needs population. They need to be in, they need to, we need to be following the IEPs, we need to serve their needs. And so I'm not saying no to everything, the, the majority of kids would be remote, but we have to deliver services that were required to live, to deliver by law.
But what about, what about delivering services to not, not to special, only to special needs kids?
No, we're looking at, we, we have three categories we're looking at. We're looking at special needs students, we're looking at our English language learners and we're looking at our disengaged students that we assessed as disengaged. And making those groups may be in depending on the details of this plan.
It also sounds like you said that general ed may be back too in small groups depending on teacher comfort level before the twenty-sixth.
Yes, we did talk, we did talk about that.
And then this also allows, um, kindergarten screening to happen in person, like in those tents, for example.
Could happen, yes. But the general instruction of the general majority of the population would be remote. But we have situations where high-needs include special education, ELS, the disengaged group that, that we're targeting. So we have to be creative, but this is general.
That sounds good. I guess what I would want to say then is that we're remote, you know, the remote piece is due to a lot of the logistical factors of getting this up, but that in-person instruction is safe, I guess, is what I'm asking the school committee to say, that it is safe if we have the proper PPE, the proper ventilation, the proper spacing at six feet, no sharing of materials, all the clean protocols in place. That if that is set up, that we can do in-person instruction.
Yeah, well.
It may, I, I guess that's what we're, you know.
Even I talked about, we've had, we've had so many meetings with central office, but I don't think I've said this to school committee. I was in a meeting last week, I guess, with, uh, Board of Health members and Julie Delillo. And I'm sure I've heard this before, but it was the first time that it actually stuck with me, that exposure is within six feet of somebody without a mask for more than fifteen minutes. That is not occurring in these buildings because we're all masked. And if we're not, we're socially distanced more than six feet. So it, it's so concrete to me now and clear, and Martha Raymond, you've probably said it to me a hundred times. Within six feet for more than fifteen minutes without a mask is exposure. And if we're all wearing masks and we have the posting on our buildings that say we need to wear masks unless we can socially distance, then we're following the safety guidelines and protocols and we're sanitizing. And we're, we have, um, we have hand sanitizer all over the place. We're investigating mobile washing stations. So it, we have been in here, it's safe to be in here. My office and everybody's office is, is fogged down every morning. I get in and it's still wet because they just fogged it down. So, um, we are following safety protocols and it is safe to be in here. Now, do I want the building assessment for air quality? And do I want a diagram of what classroom spaces and spaces are safe to be used for more kids than just one or two? I do, but that's different than having small groups come in and do in-person instruction while we're figuring, figuring out the logistics. So you have one of two things you can do tonight. You can vote this plan tonight or you can vote this plan at next week's school committee meeting. But I'm going to leave this meeting moving forward with this plan, not if I don't have a vote. Because I need a direction.
Well, I think, I think it would be, to me, at least a vote could be that with the things I just said, does the school committee believe that in-person instruction can occur in whatever format that it can occur, right? Because the ventilation study is going to come back and dictate, how many kids can I get in this building, right? So the plan that we have forward now may or may not occur depending upon what the ventilation study says. So to me, it would be, can you vote that in-person instruction would be possible if we have all the parameters in play? And then we're going to figure out who's going, yes, kids with high needs are going to get more than kids who are general ed. That's just a fact that, and that is what the commissioner said and it's probably going to happen because.
So I'm going to split hairs, I'm going to split hairs a little bit and I need, um, I need the rest of the committee, I need you to chime in here. I don't, uh, uh, my vote tonight isn't believing that in-person can happen if, if these certain things are met because we don't have those, those protocols for, for what that is. And we know.
What protocols don't you have?
Well, listen, it's a lot more than six feet masks and, and, uh, it's, you know, six feet masks in fifteen minutes. Because, like, there, there's so much that goes into what is this, what does school look like then? But I think, I think, and please, please team chime in, that what this is, is an agreement that you're on the right path, that fundamentally this, this idea, this, this plan for. that what this is, is an agreement that you're on the right path, that fundamentally this, this idea, this, this plan for remote and then transitioning into hybrid is the right path pending all of the details getting worked out. Am I, am I being too broad?
I think, I think you're right, Amy, because I think we have to, I think we still have to consider that, that we need the protocols in place for, you know, what's the trigger for, for stopping this? Or what's the trigger for, you, you know, like if someone's positive, you know, what hap- like we just, we just need confirmation of, of, like the stuff your safety task force is working on to, to make this plan work on the ground. But I think like to your point, I think that this is, I think we do need to agree to move forward with this plan. And we need to call it like a, it's not a remote to hybrid, it's a remote and then a rollout to hybrid so that we're allowed to have kids slowly in, in between September 16th and October 26th. Like, so we can't just call it remote to hybrid because it's a remote and transition into hybrid or some, or something that makes it, that makes it.
A phased in hybrid.
Yeah, it just needs to be dynamic sometimes, not just.
A, a phased in hybrid which allows for in-person instruction. The other piece to this is that on Mondays and the, on Monday's commissioner's call, the state is coming out and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education said two days, we would have a metric that we would follow for when we're shutting down. We've yet to receive it, but that is coming. And so with the work that we're doing on safety within our working groups and our task forces and then guidance from the state, I would hope to have something by the end of this week at the latest.
Yeah, I mean.
Karen, Ted, John?
I'm, I'm comfortable with voting on the plan tonight.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion?
I mean, I'll make, I'll make, I'll make, I'm, I'll make the motion to vote for this remote to phased in hybrid plan. And I guess, is that, is that enough?
Yeah, I think so.
Go ahead, a second.
A second.
Okay, so for discussion, I think it's, I, I just want to make sure that it's out there that this, that, that we're meeting again on August 12th and several more times. But specifically on August 12th before this is, the plans are due to the state. So what we're voting on tonight is the, the, the approval to move forward and continue on the path for this, as Suzanne said, this remote to phased in hybrid. Knowing that there, knowing that there's a lot more coming.
Right, that this is, this is planning.
Still it is, I know the superintendent from Nahat was in discussions for the district task force. He shared any of this with himself and Met, the Metco director. And also is this going to be online, like on the district site soon?
My presentations are always put up as part of, my presentations are put up, yes. The Nahat superintendent I have not talked to this week.
He's been part of discussions.
He's on, he was invited to be part of the district task force. I can circle back with him tomorrow.
Nice. Okay, then I'm going to call the vote. Karen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I want to, as a quick follow-up, I want to acknowledge that we have at least 84 questions on the Q and A as well as some participants with their hands up. We are going to do some screen captures of those unanswered questions so that they can be answered. We talk, we've talked about doing a number of things, we've talked about doing FAQs. We have talked about holding, once we have the plan on August, what is it? The final plan is on August 15th or 16th?
Fourth.
Fourteenth, about holding a Q and A for parents. We also, the intention is to take a, to do something similar to what we did this week and have people submit questions and ideas, opinions via that Google document. Because I, I think everybody should know that even if they're not being answered here in the moment, that they are part of the task force decisions, they are part of the superintendent and her team's decisions, they are part of the school committee decisions. And that these, all of these comments are really helpful, I encourage people to continue to communicate with us. And I understand that it's frustrating to have your, your, your question up there on those 85 question and answers, but we, but we can't, we, we, we have so much business that we've got to get through tonight that we're not going to be able to answer those. So my apologies, but they will be answered. So, thank you.
I also wanted to share, if there's anybody out there for students with disabilities or five or fours, they absolutely may email me or call me and I will respond personally to every one of you.
Thanks Martha. Okay. My head's spinning. So let's, superintendent, shall we move on?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to recommend that the FY 20 budget update be moved to the 12th, given the time. The district handbook, if you want to bring it up, it's in the link on all the changes were sent on the agenda. I think that is the last item under my superintendent's report.
Suzanne, can you pull that up? I can't share on my screen for some reason.
I've got it.
So my understanding is that this is a previously approved handbook.
Correct.
And we are, we, what needs to be approved are the edits.
Correct. Can everybody see that?
Nope.
Nope.
Agenda.
Let me go back and do it again.
Hey Pam, while you're doing that, is this handbook going to be like amended with our new, like statements about mask wearing and apps and, and our requirements for apps, I mean, attendance and things that are COVID related?
We were going to keep that separate, we were going to keep those separate. Because our hope is that, you know, this is the ongoing district handbook that has been, when we're in person, there are talks.
I, it might, wait, my question is, no, I think this, I think this should be a separate document and go, and go like it is, but I'm just saying, but are we going to have like a little mini COVID handbook so that people are signing off on that too, that people have read and understand the new policies and the changes or the things that are different from this handbook?
My sense is, and Jean, correct me if I'm wrong, that you've been talking about that maybe in the phase four learning group, uh, working group? Because I know the high school talked about that today with me. Is, is that been up for discussion, Dr. Bacon?
Sorry. What exactly?
So Mr. Kohat said something to Mrs. Karen today about, oh, that's going to be in the remote handbook. So has there been any discussion in the phase four group about remote handbook? Yes.
Okay. I mean, not necessarily specifically about a remote handbook. Some of the, the expectations and things that are, that are specific to our situation.
Okay.
We communicated in documents that are being produced by our committee. And I assume other committees, like the safety things is not our, not in our bailiwick, but it's in somebody else's.
So the. And all the policies that we're going to be updating that are temporary.
Yes, yeah.
I would imagine that it's like the acceptable use policy, you know, our digital policy, you know, that it's a separate document that everybody signs.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying, like, when paperwork goes home with families in, in Aspen, whatever, and they're doing all their paperwork, is there going to be, are we going to have something, I mean, I mean, the kids going to college are signing like the pledge that, you know, they're going to check their temperatures, they're going to, you know, keep their masks on. It's like sort of, you know, they're not going to go to websites they're not supposed to go to, you know, that, that responsible use policy. It's same, I just was wondering that if, if this was just going to have an addendum that would.
We will do that, we will do that. If, if it wasn't on our radar, I will make sure I circle back with leadership on that.
I just think, I just think everyone just needs to be on the same page about what everyone's responsibility is in making this work. Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's move into this, who's going to walk through the edits?
I am, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so Maureen has put in the edits here, that.
And my presumption before we get into this is that everybody on the school committee has looked at this already so that you're prepared to move forward, that if there were concerns that you have voiced them. Okay, go Pam, sorry.
So I haven't, I have not gone through these, unfortunately, I have not had time, but these were suggestions from the high school that under discrimination. There was, there was a whole section from Christopher Norken about definitions and statements on racism as prejudice, discrimination, or antagonism directed against someone of a different race. With all that's going on and all of the equity issues that we have, Chris Norken, dean of students at the high school, recommended that these sections be added. However, he didn't recommend where. And so it was our hope that the school committee would decide where to put this in, number one, if to put it in. And ROC, I'm not sure I know what that is. If to put it in and where to put it in.
I, I would say that, can you scroll down? I, I would say that it, it would go after harassment.
So or, or even like above hate crime, you can put in. Anti-racism in there as a category or as a statement there. And I just don't know what ROC is. I don't know what I'm missing here.
It's the student, one of the students of color groups at the high school.
Oh. So we would have a statement on racism, above hate crime and a statement on anti-racism in that same area. And Christopher thought that that would be important to add, given, given what's going on in our, our world today. And I agree and support that.
I do too.
Suzanne, isn't there a new, didn't we get a, an update on a new harassment policy that's come out?
So the, that's all, wait, am I, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um, so that's all related to, to what the Betsy DeVos's office and it's more about looking into harass, I mean, the changes, the changes are basically about looking into harassment and, and the preponderance of evidence you have to have to forward a case and stuff. So it's kind of different than this. I mean, this just says, don't do it. And then our policy says, what happens when you do do it? I, I think it's fine to just keep this, right, because.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, we weren't putting something in here that we were going to, like, you know, have to change in a.
No, I think, I think as long as, I, I had, I just, I think as long as we don't say, I mean, we're just saying, don't do it in here, that we're defining what it is and saying, don't. Yeah, or, and you, and you, and you will be punished, but we don't talk about how or why and, or where or whatever. So I think that's all part of the policy that we need to update.
Pam, are we collecting data? Is it, I don't know if this is the right area or not, right? But our attention is right where it should be in regards to the, the meeting that we had in Boston. And I, and I was just wondering, there's got to be, we have to stop on data collection. And does that get mentioned in this somehow?
We have to start on what?
Some type of data collection.
We talked about a tool for reporting, for families to report and students to report. We have not developed that tool yet. It would be part of our bullying, our, our school district bullying and prevention program, uh, plan. And that, that's where it would go. But Mrs. Raymond has talked about, we've talked about for a couple of years now, even before that Boston meeting, getting a reporting tool. We know that other districts have one and we have to tap into our colleagues to figure out how to make that happen here.
All right, so let's, I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to put the hammer down, but let's stay focused on working through the student handbook because this is a really important topic and, and not, I don't want to have it as an aside. Sorry.
Can I keep going?
Yes, please.
Assistant principal would be changed to dean of students, that's a simple change. An apology to the victim and/or written reflection, which we felt was important to add into there. Participation and empathy development, cultural diversity, anti-harassment, anti-bullying, or intergroup relations program through restorative justice practices. We know that high school is committed to restorative justice practices, so that would be inserted there. I'm going to keep going and if you stop me, then I know you have a problem with it.
Can we, can, can you just go back to Amy's, time into Karen's point about the new harassment policy? I think we should just add in here, like on page seven, Pam, at the bottom of it, it says the Swan Scott Public Schools will work with an individual who files a complaint of discrimination or harassment, including conducting an investigation and holding conferences in order to fairly and expedately result. It, so conduct an investigation in, in accordance with our policy or something. Or just, you know, you know what I'm saying, like, like we are, we should refer to our policy here. Because, because depending on what our states, just, I mean, a state's attorney general, if, if per lawsuit, if they win or not, we're not going to change it. And if they don't, we have to add that language.
We should put the reference in here as well, I'll just highlight it for Maureen.
Okay.
Yeah, she can just make that sound, I mean, whatever, you get what I'm saying.
Okay, um.
Sorry.
No, what are we doing this for? You're just happy you're not showing the document tonight.
I, I can't talk and find things at the same time, it's like.
So you'll see there's not excessive changes to this, but there will be an appendix or an addendum that re, that will outline remote and hybrid in our new, there's nothing here, I'm just looking for her comments.
I see something down special education.
Okay.
That was like the next thing I saw, it's like in thirties.
Oh, okay. Let me move it. Wow, okay.
Yeah, page 37.
So special education observation law, added this section, Mrs. Raymond, did you do this?
Yeah, it's actually not under the, the observation law, it's, it, so I might actually have her put another title in, in between.
I can do that right now, what title you want.
It's basically just saying that, that, about equal opportunity. So that, which is a given, we've always followed it, but we're being explicitly now stating it in the handbook that certainly students with disabilities have a right to access art, music, vocational, health services, transportation. It is, it is just being now explicitly stated. Oh, it was always happening, it's just another addition.
Okay. So now I've got that, okay. Uh, keep going.
Make, write, write special education in front of that or something, so we don't just think it's the EOE, but yeah. It's so weird, why aren't those with the rest of them in alphabetical order, just out of curiosity? You know, you know me and my rules. You know, you know me and my rules.
Don't know.
Like, I think those two might need to be moved up.
You send that to Mrs. Karen, you make sure you send that, no.
I think that when I was going through this and reading it, I just, things just kept jumping out of me that were, that were not following because of COVID. And I just think those things, I, I, we're just gonna have to highlight some of those things.
Uh, so the general high school, they wanted to change rules to expectations, I don't have a problem with that. Now that I did away with that comment. Uh, the next, edit. Link provided in worded, in wording to click on link, so, oh, okay, so they provided a link on this one. That's the only change there. Each school has an incident report form that should be completed when an incident of bullying is being reported. Each school administration has access to the form. But that is different than what you were talking about Ted, in terms of a reporting mechanism for when a child gets home and they wanna report something and a parent can go on. So we have this limited reporting system, we wanna grow it, and we wanna expand it.
So I'd just say that, that sentence is really awkward. A, a form should be completed at each school when an incident of bullying.
Whether, whether or not the bullying occurs in school or out of school, like if you wanna report, I mean, isn't that what we're trying to say? Like, we want kids to be able to tell their family and their family reports it, right, or is that, is this one?
True, um, Amy, can you re-say that or type it in?
Uh, okay.
Well, you could, you could go into your document later and type it in.
What page is this?
It is page seventy-three, if you wanna redictate it, a, a form should be completed at each school.
A, a, a school-specific form should be completed with each incident of reported bullying, yeah, people chime in.
Or, or such, uh, conduct.
A school-specific form should be completed with each incident. Now, such conduct is, I don't get it, a school-specific form should be completed with each incident, or with every incident of reported bullying.
Pam, does that have to go to Betsy at the end of the year?
The, the, yes, we do have to report incidences to, there's a report that we file, yes.
I don't, I don't agree with that, or such, or such conduct, seems extraneous, sorry Ted. Okay.
Amy, this is John, just, um, just a question on the language here, which should, um, so, should sounds like it's optional.
Must, yeah, you're right. Is to be filled out, or it must be filled out, yeah.
Shall, something.
Shall be completed, yeah.
Okay, the next one, on page seventy-five, school property and school-related events, they wanna change, um, perhaps, add, uh, including CBD products, so that's okay. So any controlled substances as defined by MGL ninety-four C, including but not limited marijuana, heroin, cocaine, as well as restricted drugs such as prescription over-the-counter drugs that are misused, and they wanna include CBD products. And that is it.
Well, that is good. Um, so I will entertain a motion to approve the, the two thousand twenty, twenty-one district student handbook with edits as made.
Amy, I go, I'm sorry, I got one more question. The, the very first thing we talked about with the, in the discrimination section, I, where did we land on that, what, what, are we adding anything new there?
We are adding, um, let me share again, sorry.
That was thirty-three, I think.
I have no idea, I will scroll. You think it was thirty-three, Amy?
No, I was wrong.
No, I think it was higher up.
Yeah, non-discrimination policy and prohibition against is, I just clicked on that side, um,
Okay, it's right here, it's on page six, so we are adding, John.
Yeah.
Um, so I just received confirmation that it is, room of color is ROC, additional definitions and statement, so racism, defining racism, and then we're adding in anti-racism section, within, probably right above hate crime, or we'll find an appropriate place to put these definitions in. As, um, this is through the work of Chris Norkin, our dean of students at the high school. And so, given the current state of what's happening, we felt it's important to include this.
Okay, uh, I, I also think it's important, I think my question is more around, just looking at the rest of the handbook, it looks like it's been vetted and reviewed many times over, and, uh, I, I just wanna make sure that whatever we're adding here, this looks fairly lengthy and substantive, that it doesn't, yeah, the district isn't gonna open itself up to any potential legal action because of this language being overly broad or anything like that, I get it. I think the concept is a go, but I just wanna make sure we're, we're.
As Darren reviewed.
Once the changes are made, Darren would typically review, legal counsel would review, and if there were anything that he cautioned us about, it would come out. But you're right, John, we do this annually, typically at my leadership retreat, make changes. And in my six-plus years, we've made changes every single year and tried to improve it, but we will have legal counsel review this section.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Okay. So Pam, am I correct, is that the end of the superintendent's update?
Yes, it is, and I request that we move the FY twenty-one budget update to August twelfth.
Okay, um.
We didn't actually vote on that, right?
You don't, you don't vote on the district.
We don't have to, yeah, we also, oh, we have to, do we vote on the district handbook?
You do not vote, you review and adopt, it's a different one.
Okay.
No vote.
So, um, so to review and adopt, uh, do, we don't take a vote?
Um, Maureen said it's a very, it's one of those outliers, I guess you could vote to adopt the district handbook for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, so I will accept, I will entertain a motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-one school district, the district student handbook. Will someone make the motion?
I will.
Will somebody second it? All in favor, uh, uh, to, of adopting this handbook? Ted?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And me, and Amy is a yes, thank you, thank you for reminding me that we needed to do that. Um, okay, so we are going to table the school business administrator, my, I just wanna make sure, um, and I think, um, we should talk about scheduling perhaps a, uh, a, because I know that that's not gonna be a, a quick minute, um, I, I wanna make sure that in the next meeting we get that done. I know that next week there're gonna be even more questions than this week, so, um, should we discuss it here, or should we talk about scheduling a separate, um, Q and A for parents, what is, any, anybody?
I, I would, uh, I would think that that would be a good idea if we can pull it together.
I agree.
Suzanne, you look like you're about to say something.
Hey, sorry, hold on, I'm muted, am I muted still?
No, you're on, you're on.
Oh, um, it's like, yes, I wanna hear everyone's question and answers, but the, 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 the questions are so much, um, better after Pam has presented something, right, like, cuz she's answered so many of the questions, it seems like, it seems like to have a question and without a presentation is kind of pointless. Like, and it's not fair to keep, it's not fair to, to do this, like, to have the whole team assembled to answer these questions. I mean, it makes sense to do it at a school committee meeting when everyone's already here, and then after the presentation or something, it just doesn't, it's, it just seems like a lot of extra work to do it on a, an additional night.
Okay.
But that being said, like, people have, there are so many legitimate things here, and I think that, I think that if we start doing, uh, if we, if we actually look at all the questions that are being answered, have been answered and try to put together an FAQ, I, I think that will help a lot.
Okay.
And, and I think that will, I look, like, make people go to that first, and it could be done maybe by chapters, or, you know, different, different concerns, or by grade, or something, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just think, I, I mean, it, these guys have sat on the hot seat so many times and answered so many questions over and over, and, and different versions of the same question, that, that at some point, at some point, we just liked Pam's comment, like, we're doing this, like, we have to do it, we're gonna make it work, we're listening to everything you said, plus, plus stuff you haven't even thought of. I don't know, like, we hire these people to be our professionals, and we need to listen to people, but we also need to do the work.
I, thank you Suzanne, because, and then I'm not being fresh, but I have been in this seat since six-thirty this morning, and I know my team is dying. And, um, I, I, I really feel like, and this is not a fresh comment, but it's a sincere comment, I feel like it's time to stop talking and it's time to start doing. And, um, I, I'm not going to satisfy every family, I'm doing the best that I can for the kids, and that's what is priority for this team. But it has been a very long day, not just for me, but for my team here, and I would just like to put our heads to the ground and really work out the details of this and share that.
But I think Pam, you've also answered, I mean, the questions people are asking, you've, you've answered in some form or another at some point. Or you haven't answered them yet because you're waiting for us to agree with this and then, and then get to the nuts and bolts, and I just think that, you know.
Okay, Suzanne, I defer to you here, because I know that you've actually been cycling through those Q and As, and I, I have not, so.
Have, I'm in your inbox already, cuz I just mailed them to you.
Well, thank you very much, um, I, I, I do, somebody.
I had answered a few of them as well, um, could we, could we do the, uh, what Suzanne was talking about in regards to.
The FAQs, yes, that would be very helpful to, because we can put it on our Reo, reunite website, webpage, that Tanya created, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm with that, I just, um, you know, I, I had prepared this to say before, but, you know, we, I, I wanna recognize to you, uh, superintendent, that I recognize that there is, um, there is, there's no plan that everybody is gonna love. And because of the fact that we are in dire times, um, there is a, there is a lack of support from our state. There is a lack of support from our federal government. There, we cannot solve a lot of the issues that, um, that working parents especially are gonna be faced with. Um, there is, there is no way that the plans that you are going to put out there are going to be met with, um, with blanket approval, because it's just not the times that we're living in now. Um, but I really, I wanna acknowledge all of the work, and, um, I know just in terms of setting up, we had planned originally for, um, the five of us to be meeting together tonight rather than remotely, and the amount of tax that that took on your technology team, um, who is already doing so much to make everything else work. Um, it, it was, um, it was a good lesson for me in terms of how not simple even the simplest things are, so I wanna acknowledge, um, I wanna acknowledge that, and, um, I wanna acknowledge that, you know, all of the work and all of the good work, and I also wanna acknowledge to our public that, um, that there is no great solution here. Um, and that there, for every, for every, um, for everything that we find a good solution for, there's gonna be something that we do not find a good solution for. And for everything that works for, um, one student is not gonna work for another student, it's just the nature of the beast, and as, as public school, um, we are, um, we are fighting to make it work for as, you know, as, as many of our, of our district as we can, as, as, as well as we can, and I know, um, superintendent, that you and your team more than anything are, um, are working really hard, so, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Okay, so, um, with that, just to be clear, we are going to take all eighty-nine of these Q and As in addition to the other emails that have come in during this week. Uh, we will get, we will begin the process of populating an FAQ on our website. And I will, I will work to take that on. So now we have, uh, the school committee protocols. Um, this is, um, this is, this is standard, John, this is new for you, welcome. Let me just open this up, can everybody, um, I feel like we just signed this yesterday, but it, it, it was a year ago. So as a synopsis, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but as elected members of the Swampscout School Committee, we represent the educational and developmental needs and interests of all students in the district. We place their interests above all else in the decisions that we make in order to ensure that the students of the district receive the best education possible. In accepting this role, we hold the pursuit of that goal as our sacred duty. And to that end, we hereby commit to the following in the conduct of our business. Then we talk about how we govern, how we treat each other, how we communicate, how we work to improve importantly, the limits of our authority, and what to do when things go wrong. So I will, this is the same document as we've been signing for the last two years, um, with some small revisions, so with that, I will, um, request a, uh, request to adopt these protocols.
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
Second, second.
Okay, so roll call vote, Ted?
Yes.
Suzanne? You're on mute.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Karen? Karen?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, and Amy is a yes, so. Thank you. And Amy is a yes. So this just requires the signature of everybody. And Maureen will let us know how to best get that done. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, subcommitting, subcommittee, we have an update from Suzanne.
So the school building committee is in the process of narrowing down our final six options for a new school building. And as part of, as part of this whittling down of options, we're trying to get as much community input as possible. We will be sending home a mailer to all homes in Swan Scott, all residences. But in the meantime, we're trying to have some community outreach events, including always attending the farmers markets between now and the end of September, so we can ask and answer questions and, and get people's feedback. And I know some people in this community have agreed to have people at the building committee in their neighborhoods, like some socially distant, you know, coffee on the curves or drinks in the driveway, kind of informal get togethers, just to look at the options and someone from the building committee. So if anyone out there would like to do something like that or host something like that, we would love you to contact S B C. There's on our website, which is accessible by the, the school district website. You can just click contact us and say you, you'd like something in your neighborhood or for some club you belong to or your book club or, or something, so that we can just share the options with you and hear what you want. And then by September fifteenth, we have to pick something. So, you know, this can't fail. We need a school, and we want to know which one is going to pass. So that's where we're at. And then, and then also, uh, we'll have community meetings at April eighteenth, I think is the next one. And then, I mean, August, God, August eighteenth and then August twenty fifth, I think, are our next two community forums to discuss these options, some more with public. So hopefully you can attend that. If you can't meet us at the farmer's market or someone's driveway. It's just a challenge during COVID here to, to reach out to people in person. So that's all I want to say. It's exciting. Yeah. Okay, that's all I have, that's all I have. You're mute.
Thank you. So then we're going to move on to the consent agenda, which is designed to expedite the handling of routine and miscellaneous business in the district. The school committee can adopt the entire consent agenda with one motion. At the request of any committee member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. Tonight, we have minutes from the emergency executive session on July twenty seventh. We have the regular session minutes from July twenty second. And we have warrants number twenty one oh two and twenty one oh four. I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussions?
Is Martha Cybert still here? Can I ask you a question?
You're on mute, Martha.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm still here Suzanne, and yes, please ask a question.
I, I just, I just noticed, like, in one of the warrants, we have school building committee payments to Hill.
Okay.
Why, is that something we're supposed to be approving or is that, because like, where is that in our budget?
Um, it is, uh, it's in a separate fund. It's not in the operating budget, same as capital is set up in different funds. But it's something that we are overseeing and we are responsible for approving the payments from it. Yes.
No, I think it's, I just, I just, I had.
I, I typically have Mrs. Gorman put the L B A and the Hill International in its own warrant, separate from everything else, just so you are aware of them. Yes.
I was just curious. Yeah, I thought that was the only question I had, I think. Thank you.
Still here.
That was all I had, Amy.
All right. So all in favor, roll call vote. Ted?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Uh, that passes unanimously, and at nine fifty four, just shy of a three hour meeting, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Second.
All in favor? Ted?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Myself, yes, we are.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Superintendent.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Uh, Joe Dulett, I just want to make sure I'm signing off properly in terms of recording everything.
Yeah, hold on one second. I'm just waiting for Facebook to finish here.
Okay. Do I need to stop the live stream?
You can stop.